Just wait a second here to make sure that we're online and outside. There we are. Welcome to the Gray Town Council Workshop of March 18th, 2025. This is a budget workshop. Tonight, we're going to finish going through the departments. We actually will have our meeting at seven o'clock and then we'll have another budget meeting after our meeting, so. Hang on to your hat. With that, I'll start with roll call. Mike?
Here.
Levi?
Present.
Krista?
Present.
Ian?
Present.
And I'm Dan McGuire, Chair of the Council, and I'm present. Tonight, we're going to start off with a presentation, I believe, correct? From Mr. Gailey, the County Manager. So this will be. Appreciate you taking the time to come tonight and speak with us. The county budget is changing, and so this is a good opportunity for us to help everybody learn about that. I'll turn the meeting over to our Town Manager, Mike Foley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a quick slide to introduce the county budget. Just want to mention, we're joined by Cumberland County Manager, Jim Gailey, and he has some brief presentation that he's going to offer us. But I just wanted to show that this year, there's an increase of $59,862 in the Cumberland County Assessment, which is 6.13% year-over-year. This budget, as I mentioned in the budget introduction last week, does continue to include year three of five for a payment for the transition to a fiscal year budget. Just to refresh everyone's memory, Cumberland County used to operate on a calendar year budget, and they switched to a fiscal year budget, and they provided no interest financing for five years for municipalities to help make that transition smoother, and we appreciate county government for doing that. So that portion of our payment to Cumberland County is $75,918. So we have after fiscal year '26, we'll have two more payments of that left, and then we'll have that not to pay in the future. So hopefully, we'll be able to navigate that in the future. And so with that, I'll stop sharing my slide here, and then I'm going to share Jim's, and I'll invite him up to speak with you guys. And I'll leave it here so you can, I think, if you. You should be able to just.
Fantastic.
Yeah, all right.
Good evening. Again, my name is Jim Gailey. I am the County Manager for Cumberland County, and just wanted to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come in and address you and talk about our budget for the '25-'26 fiscal year. I will start off by saying, this is a budget that none of us were happy about. It is a budget that kind of is north of a percentage increase that we felt comfortable with, but we had nowhere to go. We spent hours trying to narrow this down expenditure-wise, and really delayed our budget before the county commissioners in hopes that we saw revenues pick up a little bit, that we could bake into this budget to offset the expenditure side and reduce the needs from taxes from the taxpayers. But I do have a slideshow. I believe you may all have that slideshow also, but I will just go through it quickly and talk about some of the high points of the budget without getting too far into the weeds, but also leave ample opportunity for any questions at the end, if that's appropriate, Mr. Chair. So, I think, like Mike said, the impact to the town of Gray was an increase of 6.65%. That is actually south of what our impact for needs or taxes were. We came in with a 7.74% increase from needs from taxes, but as you know, it's largely based on the valuations of each community and how that is distributed countywide over the 28 communities. We did have a finance committee, which is established annually through Town Council members and Select Board members from communities across the county. They met three times and reviewed our budget. They brought in department heads and asked the granular questions of the department heads on why this and why that. And so as of January 21st, they finished up, and they recommended by a vote of four to zero to move the budget forward to the county commissioners, who ultimately approved the budget in February 21st of this year. Kind of give you a quick budget overview. We're seeing a lot of costs that were really fixed, and we didn't have any wiggle room. Health insurance, we were up 11%. We do have three positions in this budget, which I'll talk quickly about. We do have a positive in that we did save $81,000 from taking out a tax anticipation note because of our ability to move to a fiscal year, no longer than a calendar year. We do have some capital obligations, the largest being the jail. And really look at how we can provide more regional training and other aspects of the fire and EMS services. So that's a very positive outcome in bringing that position on, and we're hoping to have that position on staff by July 1st. Revenues, like I talked about, we increased revenues in our parking garage, our civil division, like I talked about. We had a lot of review in increasing our revenues at the jail, in particular, the federal inmates, and the revenue that we receive from the federal government for inmates we hold at the jail. And that's offsetting, but not entirely, the cost of bringing back those 11 correction officers. We're up in communication contracts, district attorney's fees, and also probate fees. So for the overall expenditures of the county, we're up $4.3 million, or 6.22%. Largely, distribution between the County General Fund and jail expenses. The cross-insurance arena is the third prong of our budgeting process, and the cross-insurance arena is actually, that budget's going down just under $55,000. Like I said, the jail's needs from taxes were significant, just under $1.3 million, or 8%. There was a lot of need at the jail, not only increasing the staffing to reflect the need to cover the increase in inmates at the jail, but also medical is ever-increasing at the jail, and also food. And so those are some challenges to cover those costs. The cross-insurance arena, like I said, operationally, we're down just under $55,000. And resulted us needing needs from taxes of the jail, general fund, and cross-insurance of just over $3 million, or the 7.74%. We do contribute to outside agencies within Cumberland County. We contribute to the Cumberland County Extension Service. We contribute to Thrive 2027, which is a subsidiary of the United Way. We provide a small funding mechanism to the Cumberland County Soil and Water, the Portland Public Library, and the Tedford House, which is a homeless shelter up in the Brunswick area.
I'm sorry, are those contributions through CDVG or through your tax revenue?
Through the tax revenue. Under debt capital, we're an increase of $135,000. That's largely because we are proposing a bond this year, large with the jail roof being one of the large portions of that. Other capital items under that bond would be, we're going through a multi-phase renovation project to our parking garage that sits adjacent to the Portland Police Department and the Cumberland County Courthouse. That's of $673,000. And then we're in need of working with the state of Maine, who we contract half our building to for court operations. And through a combined approach, we are replacing the windows on that side of the building. And that was an $800,000 price tag for the first phase of window replacement. So to summarize, we are, again, not all that happy with the tax rate impact that we have this year. I think this slide shows that we do not fall all that high in the 7% range. We typically hover in the 4% range, and that's where we feel comfortable. I actually like even trying to get lower. But some of the things that we up against on an annual basis is just fixed, and we really don't have a lot of wiggle room. One thing the county doesn't have, much like the towns and cities in Cumberland County, is we don't have a vast array of revenues that we can rely on. We really have a small collection of revenues that we depend on to offset the tax impacts. And so we are really in a very narrow window of creating a budget through revenues to offset taxes. So I went through that pretty quick. I wasn't going to go through every slide, but I thought it gives you a good understanding of where we're at, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have about the county's budget.
Very helpful. Thanks. Questions? Mike?
Sure, I'll go first. So I just wrote down some notes. So just a few things, like on the body cams, you said that, you know, we were getting some funding for that. We're not getting that anymore, and it's $66,000. Is that an annual cost? We're going to pay for that every year, or is that just a once a year, or how does that work?
That's an annual cost. We had to sign up for a 10-year agreement with the Body Cam Axiom, and that's a cost that we will be experiencing every year.
And have we seen the benefit from that? I mean, we're hoping there's a benefit, but have we actually seen one?
Yes. Yes. Anytime you can put a body cam on an officer, I believe it not only protects the officer, but it also protects the public, because everything's being filmed on the delivery service that our offices provide on a daily basis.
And then when it comes to the jails, I know we need to do the new roof. But as far as, you know, we've all seen, you know, stories about overcrowding, and then, you know, are we going to be looking at having to add jail space in the future? Are we, you know, what's the 10-year plan for, you know, for our jails here in Cumberland County?
We are licensed to the state to have upwards of 480 to 500 inmates in that jail. Currently, we have about 370 inmates in jail, so we do have some capacity there. We are having no discussions of expanding the jail. I will let you know that we are finishing up a project that will be done in June, that we used our Opera Funds to put an expansion onto the jail for a new medical wing. One thing we learned through COVID was that our medical wing at the jail was insufficient, and what was designed back in 1991 doesn't live in 2025. And so we have added a number of new cells within a medical wing that have negative pressure, and we're able to, I think, move into that center, into that wing of the building and be pretty solid in capacity for our medical purposes.
And this is my last question. How many sheriffs do we have in total in Cumberland County?
I want to say it's around 65.
Okay.
That's a split between the general fund, and we do a lot of contract services with towns.
Yeah, and that was my other part of the question. Out of the 65, how many are contract?
I wish I brought my budget. I could give you that. I would say it's probably around 30.
About half.
Yeah.
And then the other 35, let's say roughly, is split up amongst all the towns that don't join any. Okay.
Other questions? Krista?
Thanks, Jim. That was really enlightening. Just curious if the county has seen any budgetary impacts from any federal cuts that have happened? And if not, are you concerned about that going forward?
We have been very concerned of that over the last 60 days. We rely on a lot of grants, and those grants have, the ones that are going, we haven't had too much rumblings about, but we've been in a process where we have a number of grants that are in, like, budget review, so they haven't given us the full green light, and they've kind of paused and dragged it along. If you had asked me a week ago, I would tell you that we were very concerned with two of the grants. But just this week, we're seeing positive comments coming out of the federal government, and they're reaching out to us now to get the ball rolling on those. So I think we'll be good, but who knows? We really are concerned with our CDVG program. We're concerned with our Emergency Management Agency, where 50% of the budget for emergency management is through FEMA funds. And so we are constantly keeping an eye out on that. But knock on wood, all is good at this time, from the probably seven or eight federal grant exposures that we have at this time.
Thanks. I guess, what is the contingency plan if you do lose a significant source of funding for how to recoup those funds from municipalities? Would it be an impact of this fiscal year, or would it more likely be something going forward?
There would be some program that we would just not do, and we would have to move on from that program. There are some other programs, much like the Emergency Management Agency. We would have to really dig in to figure out what we would do. Like I said, 50% of that budget is in the general fund budget, and so we're not going down to zero. But what does that look like moving forward? That's something that we're in discussions with now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ian?
I, that was a really helpful presentation. Thank you. I'm sort of wondering about the, just to stay on the theme of grants, and just what are there, where there are other sources of funding you might have looked at, for example, or have been looking at over the last seven years for the jail's roof, like a congressionally-directed spending award or something of that nature? I mean, are there, what kind of other options have you explored?
We have not explored any other options on the jail roof. We didn't find that there's anything really out there. We did go for a congressional spending dollars, and we were awarded a million dollars about three years ago. And we actually put that million dollars into working with communities that use the Cumberland County Regional Communication Center, and we outfitted those communities with portables and mobile digital radios. And so we kind of, even though we assumed a million dollars of that, we spread the wealth through the 19 communities that we work with under the Regional Communication Center.
Okay, that's great. And I assume that as the county administrator for CDVG, you can't also touch that pot for some of your other capital needs, like for the jail?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, I think those are my questions.
Levi? I'm curious, how large is your reserve, and what sort of constraints do you work under for your reserve fund?
Our reserve, unfunded, undesigned fund balance is upwards of 20%, and that is what our policy is. And our policy also reads anything over 20%. We need to look at one-time costs and capital and shed some of that off to capital expenditures. I will say that our fund balance policy dipped a little bit, because last year, we lost about $750,000 at the jail. And so that took a little bit of bite out of that fund balance.
How much is in that balance currently, ballpark? You're not at 20%, I take it?
I don't have the latest number. If I was the ballpark, about $4 million.
Okay. And is that close to your 20% limit?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. Okay. And so are you required to keep a minimum fund balance?
Not to my knowledge, no.
So that's money that could be used if you get in trouble as the year progresses?
Yeah. Covers us about six months.
Okay. And the subscriptions for your IT, that particular cost, do you anticipate that to be an annual cost now of roughly that amount? Or is that a one-time surge?
We will know more next year.
Yeah.
This was the first year that kind of caught us a little off guard, that, you know, I think many of us, both in our organizations and even at home, have experienced what Adobe has done over the last number of years in terms of, you're now no longer buying the disk at Staples and letting it run for five, eight years, as long as you can get out of it. You're now on a month-to-month subscription or a yearly subscription. And many of those software, we're very software-heavy, have gone in that direction.
It's the way of the world.
Yeah.
Yeah. The federal reimbursement to cover the cost of housing, does that reimbursement actually cover your costs?
The federal?
For the jail, as far as the jail is concerned?
Yes.
It does?
It does. It covers our cost and really helps us offset the tax impact of the jail.
And is there a parking garage that the county owns besides the one at the courthouse and police station?
No.
That's the only one?
That's the only one.
And do the, there's other, you get revenue from that facility, do you?
We do. We actually have a contract with the state of Maine judicial system, because they're in the same building as us. They pay us per employee for a space. And we also have contracts, monthly contracts, out to different businesses in the old port.
Do you have a separate reserve fund for that building for capital costs, or is it just rolled into everything else the county has?
It pretty much rolls in, and however, we're able to offset, because we are constantly monitoring the increased cost of parking on the Portland Peninsula. And so we're always doing polls of what other garages are charging and trying not to match the top, but be somewhere in the middle at a fair price.
Does it pretty much cover your costs, would you say?
I would say yes.
Close, yeah?
Yeah, until it gets into some high capital costs. Like you saw, we need to bond $650,000.
And then looking towards the future, you know, your graph with the increases over the last few years, you know, the trend is definitely up. And I know the desire is to get back to maybe that 4% or even lower, but how likely is that in the next three years? Do you envision another year of 7%? Or do you have, have you done any predictions that way?
I'm feeling that we, me personally, would like to be below 7%. We have a, you know, one thing we haven't talked about is that we have a unique situation where we have all four union contracts up this year.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of getting baked into this budget. And so none of those contracts are solved at this time. Two of the contracts are at the jail. We have a patrol contract open, and we have a dispatch contract open. So as we all know, contracts of three years, where we were as an economy and a region three years ago is much different than what we are today in terms of salaries and benefits. And so we needed to accommodate that.
Have you given any consideration to kind of spreading those out so they don't all ring the bell in the same year?
And that's what we're doing. Yeah.
So going forward?
We're negotiating two-year contracts, three-year contracts, yes.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you very much for the information. That was very helpful. I think for us, you know, we have to get through this budget year, obviously, but next year, it would be good to have an idea of, you know, what we will have to contribute to the county.
Sure.
That future trend information, I think, would be really valuable for people to have. Thank you very much for your time and coming tonight.
Hey, not a problem. Thank you for the invite. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Jim.
Thanks.
That's okay.
Thanks for arranging that, Mike.
Yeah, my pleasure. With that, I'll transition us to the next portions of our budget, which is our Economic Development Department. As everyone will recall, this was a new department that was established as part of our budget last year, and we've made some revisions to that budget. So this department includes, I have some slides that'll hopefully show up, includes a director budgeted for $102,200, 25% of the town manager's salary, $3,500, and 50% of the communications and IT director's salary, $41,700, as that position helps with marketing and promoting the town and communication. We eliminated, as I previously outlined, as I introduced the budget, the project manager and town engineer position. As we worked through that, we just found that there wasn't quite enough work for a full-time position, and that's something we tried, and it didn't quite make sense. So we appreciate the council's support to let us try it, and. So, we appreciate the council's support to let us try it and we were able to remove that from the proposed budget. We continue to estimate, given that our Economic Development Director Denise Clavett didn't join us until about mid-fiscal year, we continue to estimate the other budgets to support the economic development operation. Professional Services does include some things such as a customer CRM program for the department to help manage contacts and connections with businesses and people in the community. We budgeted for some project management consulting at a much lower rate than a full position. And we've also budgeted for some village zoning consulting to support the village aspect of the comprehensive plan rezoning process that's happening that we hope to commence in the next fiscal year. We continue to include a budget for village supplies, which include enhancement of our winter lighting project as well as any other activities or promote village things that may continue to grow as we grow our focus on the village in the months ahead. And again, this budget is fully funded through our tax increment financing districts and that's a total of, that's a total of $315,139, which you'll see reflected when we talk about revenues later in the budget. If anyone has any questions in reference to this budget specifically, our director, Denise Clavett, is here and would be happy to help answer those.
Any questions, anyone? Krista?
Could you just elaborate a little bit on the professional services line? I'm not recalling what CRM is in your slide.
Customer Relationship Management.
Oh.
Yeah, Customer Relationship Management Program. So, the proposal is for us to partner with a company called Blue Dot, which provides an ability for us to track all our businesses here in the community and our interaction with them. It also will provide an interface where the public will be able to find businesses in the community that automatically gets updated through resources such as Google and Apple Maps and things of that nature on an automatic basis. But Denise has done a lot of work on that. She can maybe speak to it in a little bit more detail. Denise, if you want to come up?
Might be helpful just to go into a quick sketch of how you view the benefit to the town of using that CRM. Sure, sure. Gray's not unique as any other community. It's very, very rare that a community has a database that actually has business listings. If you need to go find how many businesses, who's in business, where they're located in Gray, you go to the assessor's office and it's a complicated documentation, you know? So, this is an ability to take those sources and merge and blend with a national company that's able to utilize Google Maps and several other data sources, Dunn &amp; Bradstreet, you name it, and be able to compile and do a monthly import or monthly update to keep that accurate. It has everything from people that contacts. If people come into the community and say, "I would like to open up another restaurant", some communities, like we have 30 of them, why would we want? So, we're able to actually answer those questions and field a lot of that information. The other piece that it's going to have provided along with it is the ability for businesses to join at no cost, right? And just to be able to input all of their data, everything from menus, if they're retail, what have you, to just elaborate upon their business, to have a business database.
Okay. So, in addition to it being accessible to the public for that type of information, it's also a way to gauge whether or not development is appropriate for the town?
That is correct.
Okay.
And then, as you started saying that, it prompted me to also want to let you know that the minute I, like, it's totally interfaces with Microsoft 365. Like this afternoon, I sent a couple emails, follow-up with a couple of businesses that'll automatically be extracted within that database. So, if somebody opens up business ABC, everything that has to deal with ABC will be pulled and have that.
Okay.
So, fast forward, somebody else is in this position five years from now, there's not a buried Denise's data, Denise's emails. It becomes the town's emails, the town's information, all in one spot.
And then likewise, you're not spending any staff time inputting that data?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Great, that sounds really useful. Just also, and this is more of a question for Mike, thanks Denise. Under the project management consulting, are we continuing with the contract we have with Principal Group? Are we still, what is the project management needs?
So, the, any work that's done with the Principal Group is we're using resources that the town had previously budgeted for the Village Transformation Project a number of years ago. But, we are continuing to work with them on a much more limited basis now that the visioning of the VTP has been completed. They'll be working with us and Maine DOT as that process kind of advances. But, we don't have a specific contract with them for any long-term work going forward. So, that's more like if we need someone to manage a specific construction project, that's surrounding economic development or things of that nature, we have those resources to potentially do that, having gone without that position.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I just wasn't totally clear on what all, what that was all entailing. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike?
As far as the, it doesn't show in here the tax revenue that we get from businesses. Do you know roughly, you know, Mike, how much tax revenue we get from businesses right now?
I would say it's probably less than 10% of the town's tax basis from businesses.
And what would that be?
I don't have the exact number.
Okay.
It's based on the, it's based on the assessed valuation of those businesses.
Okay.
So, we, businesses' values have been flow, so I don't have the exact number in that case. But ultimately, the goal of having an Economic Development Department is to grow that number so that way, you can have a, maybe a 60-40 business residential split someday or a 70-30 business residential split someday.
And that's kind of where I'm trying to get to. I mean, are we spending more money than we're actually bringing in?
Well, we're not because this position in this department is fully funded through tax increment financing districts that is outlined to support specific business growth in those districts that are established. So, we probably generate millions of dollars in business revenue for the town and we only have $315,000 that's dedicated to this department.
All right. And what is our, I know it's early and I'm excited about this position, but you know, what are our expectations moving forward, five years, 10 years? Have we gotten that far yet?
No, we have a lot of, you know, hot button items that we're trying to address as we try to tackle those things, work on developing a business retention and expansion model and get these databases up and running and work with the businesses that we have here and to be a resource to those. We are definitely something that will have a better vision long-term in the future, but it's a valuable resource that, you see Denise's monthly department reports and there's one in the council agenda this evening. There's a lot of things that she's doing that aren't on my plate and aren't on the plate of other department heads.
Okay. Leva?
So, I have one question that's potentially outside of this. So, it's funded by the TIF and it's $315,000. So, that extra $17,000 difference, where is that going? Because I would expect to see it basically, you know, $315,000, $315,000 of proposed budget to the transfer in if it was...
What number are you referring to?
So, I'm referring to total manager budget of $298,000.
Yep. Yeah, the difference, the difference in the revenue versus that is the benefits costs associated with the Economic Development Director, which is handled in a different budget and we're able to aggregate those in the revenues. That's something we didn't include last year as a revenue associated with that because we wanted to get the department up and running, but those are eligible expenses that are associated with the cost of running an Economic Development Department. So, that's why the numbers aren't exact. I apologize, I didn't make that clear.
And then, my other question was on the decreased advertising. Is there, I don't know, obviously, there's no historical data right now for it. So, is that a number that we feel good about?
So, we put together a budget that was the best guess in all those categories without a director in place. And so, now that we have a director in place, those are numbers that we feel that are confident. That might be a number that we kind of hold and not use. And at the end of the fiscal year, we're only actually going to transfer what we actually use in the department budget from the TIFs. And so, that might be a placeholder for if we have an abnormal situation or something that comes up that we need to properly advertise for or, it's called advertising in the budget, but it's really marketing, community marketing. So, when we get through our marketing and branding phase, which is one of the tasks that's on the Economic Development Director's responsibilities, we'll have hopefully a new brand that we can use and begin to market. So, we'll want to produce materials which show that brand and so, that will be part of all that.
I have to say, one of the advantages or one of the things I like about this is one of the costs that the town has incurred over the years and suffered as a result of it is the loss of institutional memory. And not being, someone leaves and they take that institutional memory with it and all that investment that the town made is gone. With the software that we're talking about tonight, the town will retain that institutional memory, even if the person doing the current work leaves. So, in my mind, what we're doing is we're protecting our investment. I mean, we're spending a significant amount of money, investing a significant amount of money, looking to get, gain back for the community. And the gain back for the community is the change in the relationship between taxes raised by, from businesses and taxes raised by residences. And we're not going to, we're not going to change that ratio without making some investment, but we have to protect that investment and I think that piece of this budget does that. That's one of the reasons why. I'm happy to see it in here, but I don't have any other questions to add, so I guess we can move on unless you have something else you want to add.
Again, we thank you for supporting this department and we hope to be able to see the fruits of our labor in the months and years to come.
Time to tell.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, the next budget we'll advance to is our Public Safety Department budget, which I forgot to put the page numbers associated with those, so I apologize, but if you're using the digital budget book, if you simply click on the Public Safety portion of the budget. This department includes the fire chief, budgeted at $105,500, the assistant fire chief of $84,200, our animal control officer at $16,800, and all our other full-time staff within the department of $591,600, and per diem staff of $295,000, and call staff of $30,000, and overtime of $75,000. This budget includes a newly approved contract that the town council approved earlier in this fiscal year, towards the end, in the fall of 2024. And so, this helps to make our wages more competitive in our department. Unfortunately, we have, continue to have three, we had two vacant positions for quite a while. We just recently developed a third. And so, we are hoping that, you know, some better marketing and things of that nature of our competitive, more competitive wages that also support a wage scale that recognizes years of experience, as we've talked about in our other wage scales, that will be more competitive. The budget also includes a hydrant increase that the Gray Water District put forth back in August of last year at 15.82%. And they had indicated to me they don't anticipate having to see an increase similar, so we have to properly reflect that in the budget. And then, we also have a new budget line that's in there to record ambulance write-offs, which is a proper budgeting tactic that our new staff accountant Debbie recognized that we weren't properly accounting for. And we were just using the write-offs to offset revenues and we should properly account for the expenses. So, that views an increase in expenses, but we do show increase in revenues in that account to kind of offset that. And then, lastly, I did make, with the recent vacancy, I did make some tweaks to this budget that, in the wages associated with it, that I'll introduce at the end of the meeting, where I'll propose some final, some final changes to the budget as we advance to our next meeting in April to approve the budget warrants. And that is the Public Safety budget in a nutshell. Our chief is here. If anyone has any specific questions, that we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? On the write-offs, that's separate from the billing line, right? So, that's a separate expense?
Yeah, it's a separate expense. And so, essentially what was happening, say we got $400,000 of rescue revenue, but we wrote off $20,000 of that $400,000, which are if people aren't able to pay or things of that nature, there's a bunch of different circumstances, then we would only record $380,000 in revenue. That's not the proper accounting for that. So, we want to record the write-offs in the expense line and account for the revenue in the revenue line.
And is there a written procedure for what constitutes or how you determine whether you're going to write something off?
Yeah, the town has policies and procedures with our billing company of how they handle that.
And is there any state law involved in that?
There are some state laws specifically, I believe, in reference to the hardship, the hardship waivers and things of that nature, but those are, those are all, they're all handled in different...
It's all part of that calculation. And that's something that that service provides for us?
Yeah, the billing company handles all these things for us.
Okay. So, this is really just accounting for what that company is doing for us to provide that service?
Got you.
Okay. Thank you. That was the only question I had. Krista?
Is the write-off for ambulances, the line that says allowance for doubtful, or is that something else? It's on packet page 50, it's like right in the middle, for $32,000. And if that's not it?
Yes, that is, that's the one.
Okay.
Yep, it's for ambulance write-offs.
Okay. And then, second to that, there's a line for equipment for $3,000, but then we also have office equipment line, firefighting equipment line, EMT equipment. So, what's in the general equipment line?
I think that equipment line is, so there's some of the, the expenses associated with the animal control officer. So, if you go veterinary fees, cremation, humane shelter, and then I think equipment might be associated with that. Chief, do you have maybe any more specifics on that? If you want to.
It was originally designated for grant match. I'm not sure why they call it equipment, but...
So, the chief just mentioned from the audience that it was put in there for a grant match for probably a grant, some equipment that we're getting.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I just was curious because there's other equipment lines. Yeah, nothing really stands out that's extraordinary, other than the conversation around the sheriff, which we'll have at a later time.
Anyone else? Mike?
Not again, was there?
The vehicle replacement, if you mentioned that, I missed it. What's, is that's...
That's for the sheriff.
Oh, that's the sheriff.
Wait.
Down, it's third from the bottom on 51.
Oh, that's part of the law enforcement contract.
Okay, yeah.
So, law enforcement's been incorporated into the Public Safety budget. I have that on our items to kind of revisit at the end of the meeting, the law enforcement contract.
Yeah, and there were a couple of like, I mean, these are really minor, but the mileage and toll reimbursement is in there twice, but one, the second time, which is on page 51, there's, you know, there's no, it's basically zeroed out after the first column.
Those are all budget lines that were combined as part of our changes in last fiscal year, so those will roll off
Okay.
when we get through fiscal year '24.
All right, yeah, so there are a few, there are a few like that, but okay, just checking. Yeah, I think, yeah, those are my questions.
Great, Mike?
On the overtime, I understand that if we're not adequately up to speed, we don't have enough people, I understand the overtime, but wouldn't there be an offset that we're not shelling out enough money because we don't have enough employees? Wouldn't that be offset somehow? Am I missing something?
Yeah, it is offset by our full-time staff when we have vacancies. This year, one of the things that we talked about when we introduced the contract changes is that we would offset some of those changes at the start of the calendar year where we did those wages. So, that's why you're seeing the wages operate at a higher rate. But in the future, if we continue to have vacancies, they're typically offset by either the per diem line, which is sometimes positions that if we don't have per diems to fill vacancies or to fill open scheduling slots and they need to be filled with an overtime, so we have appropriate staff, as well as full-time, when a, you know, a full-time position is vacant or absent, we need to fill those with overtime to ensure we have the appropriate staff.
So, giving those significant raises like we did didn't solve our problem, is that...
We're three months into it. It's not something that fixes it instantly.
Anything else, Mike?
That's all I have.
Anyone else? I think we're all set then.
Great.
Thank you very much.
On the next budget we have is the Public Works budget. And this is, so in the budget warrant and in our budget summary, Public Works includes multiple public works-related departments, Public Works, recycling and solid waste, as well as facilities and parks. This is specifically just the Public Works operation that we typically call Public Works. And this includes the director budgeted at $92,600, the foreman budgeted at $67,300, the mechanic budgeted at $68,000. the Mechanic, budgeted at $68,900, and we have seven Equipment Operators, budgeted at $445,770, a part-time Administrative Assistant at $13,000, and Seasonal Plow Driver, Plow Drivers of $25,000, and Overtime of $65,000. This budget also includes the Annual Paving Reserve of $700,000, so this is one of the things that you would have seen tweaked over the years where that was typically included in the CIP, but we're including that in the operational budget because it's something that we want to do every year, and, and that, that helps us to build up that reserve. We also see savings as part of the new private road contract that we were able to recognize, where we were able to lock in three years with an option for two more, and that resulted in savings where we were, and we were nervous, we, we might not obtain a contractor in general, but we received some bids and we were able to recognize some savings. I'd already mentioned to the council in multiple times in advance of today that we had a situation where our sand supplier was sold to another entity, and so, we are seeing, we're budgeting for a pretty much double cost in sand, given what we had, the, the fortunate budget that we had before, we were able to do that much affordable cost due to a long-term relationship. Also, you'll see a significant increase in culvert supplies, so one of the things of going through the exercise when we were trying to appropriate the correct budget lines, we missed one budget line that didn't get carry forward in the merger of the winter and summer roads line, and so, we're fixing that to reflect a previous budget in the past, and so that, that's why you see that increase. And then, fuel and parts can, are something that are increasing due to economy and usage, and I'll talk about our fleet in a minute, but I'll, as part of some of our CIP work, but I'll stop here if you have any specific questions of the operating budget.
Questions?
Paving, because I don't see it in, as a line here, but I mean, it must be. What roughly have we been spending on a yearly basis on paving?
That budget line?
It looks like the Public Safety Budget spreadsheet might have been also put in under Public Works.
Yeah, I, I thought that too. There's like veterinary fees in this one?
Yeah, and the doubt, the allowance for doubtful.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that might have been a glitch when the initial thing was produced, but I have it here, if you go to the, the digital budget book itself from our website, you'll see that budget line, it's called Annual Paving Fund, it's under Road Striping and Crosswalks. So if you have the original one that was downloaded like the first night, there might have been a glitch in, in the production using ClearGov, so we apologize for that. But if you, if you click on it now, it, it shows the, the correct budget spreadsheet.
Let me just get to that.
So if you use the, the, not necessarily the link that's on the agenda, but it's the, the budget book document, should be fairly front and center on our website.
So not the one on the agenda?
No.
No, the one on the agenda will direct you to our transparency module, which includes budget information, but it's not specific to the budget book.
So I'm in the budget book and it looks the same, so.
You, you're on the website?
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm on it too, fresh live here on my device, and it shows it as.
If you do the PDF.
If you do the PDF, that's what I was just, that's what I just.
But.
So, are we going to the budget book, is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the budget book, page 53, it's, it's the same.
It's dated March 6.
Okay, thanks. I don't know why, it's not.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I can come around and see what site you're on.
So, and the, and the.
Yeah, so that's not the digital budget book, that's the PDF?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So it's the, which one, the document is basically?
Go to government.
Yeah, that's, and then I went to FY26 budget.
Yeah, and hit, hit ClearGov Dashboard, Document Based Look.
Oh, okay.
Yep, it's off the FY26 town webpage.
Public Works.
Yeah.
The nice thing about this is it's a little easier to navigate to, than the PDF.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize those were different, so I'll be using this one.
Yeah, I apologize for that glitch.
No, I'll use this one from now on.
Yep.
The only, yeah, the only, is if you make any, if you have questions or make adjustments or notes or what, you, you, you know, that's the only downside to.
Yeah, so the paving is, is in there under Annual Paving Fund in that budget, are you able to see it now?
Yep.
The 700 grand. Do you have any rough estimates of what we've been spending?
That's what the town's been budgeting for a number of years through the Capital Improvement Program, and it's been the goal of previous councils to try to keep that solid. The town's known for doing a good job of keeping its roads paved, and so that's what we've tried to, to keep it at.
Yeah, I would say that we actually fell behind on our paving schedule for several years and have been trying to get back up. I see Tim nodding, yeah, so that, that's another reason why. It's not just because Tim's great, has such a great job, it's, it's also, yeah, just because we don't want to get further behind.
Yeah, and I forgot to mention our Public Works Director, Tim Estes, is here to answer any specific questions as well.
Who, yeah, anyone else have questions? With, again, with regards to paving, I think, 20, was it 2022 the last report that we had from Gorel Palmer on road conditions?
Yeah.
So, I'm curious where we're at as far as road conditions are concerned in this paving budget, are we making progress on our roads that are in the worst repair, or are we keeping even, or are we falling behind?
I think we're making progress, thankfully, pricing has been a little bit more favorable than we had anticipated, so for instance, in our last fiscal year, I think we were able to pave a little bit more than we initially planned on. One of the things that we hadn't planned on was a shim and overlay of Yarmouth Road, and we were able to, the condition of that had deteriorated enough, and that we knew that the Village Transformation Project wasn't going to be making any immediate improvement, so we were able, that was something we were able to incorporate with the funds that we have. And thankfully, based on the reserve structure that we have, if for some reason, with construction seasons and things of that nature, we're not able to get every project in, we're able to do them over multiple fiscal years by continuing to capitalize that fund.
So I'm curious to know what it would, what we would have to spend to get rid of our, get rid of, to get the roads that are considered in poor condition off that list.
Do you want to come up?
You have to come up to the microphone.
To be honest with you, I think we're doing a very good job because the way it's turning out right now, all of our roads get paved once every 10 years, and that's the schedule we've been, we've been trying to stay on, and we were, like, like, Mike said, we were able to do a couple extras last year because the price came in, I mean, every year the price is different, I mean, it could be $90 a ton this year, it was 78 last year, you just never know.
Seesaws, yeah.
So, but I think we're, we're in really good shape as far as getting our worst roads done.
So, do we have any that are still, would be considered in poor condition from the 2022 report?
I'd have to look, but I would say no.
Okay, I just think it's, I just want that to be said out loud.
I mean, if you ride around the towns around us, I mean, we're doing very well.
Yeah, I just think it's, it's, it's more costly to catch up than it is to stay current, and I guess so, that one is one.
We try to get them done, like, like I said, every 10 years, 10 to 12 years. When I first started here in 2014, we had done Middle Mayall Road, and Middle Mayall Road is on the list to get, to get done in FY26.
Not all our roads are created equal though, from the standpoint of either their construction or the amount of wear and tear they get, so is that every 10 years a kind of a blanket thing, or are we, there's some that we're actually?
That's what we, that's when they start to deteriorate badly, so we try to get to them then, and if we have one that, that's deteriorating quickly, more quickly than the one that we're scheduled to do, then we'll do that one first, and then, so, but.
Do we have any roads or road surfaces or shoulders that we need to rebuild that you foresee in the near future?
No.
Okay, great, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so Tim, street repair, is that like when, you know, in the springtime, when potholes, things like that, is that what that is for?
Yes, that's for that, that's also for, when we change all of our cross culverts, we always used to hire out to do, to do the paving of the pavement that we rip out from the, from the cross culverts, but we were, we're, we were fortunate enough to be able to do that on our own now and save thousands of dollars.
And I didn't see in here culvert cleaning, did I miss that, or?
No, culvert, culvert cleaning?
Yeah, like, I know I've worked with you guys before, you know, when the culvert, you and you guys have them cleaned out when they're culvert the full, and you have them backed them out or whatever.
We usually, we don't have a lot of problems, I mean, we have problems with them getting clogged with, with leaves, and then, I mean, we have certain techniques that, that we use, we don't need any special equipment in, in order to.
You're doing that themselves, okay, all right. And then, my last question, to kind of go along with Dan's question as far as the paving goes, a lot of times when we're doing paving, you know, I think somebody's, from your department, said it to me once, you know, you know, it's, you know, sometimes you have to put a lot of work in before you pave, because.
You do, that's, I mean, we spend all summer getting these roads ready for pavement.
So, in that $700,000 that we have budgeted, is that strictly for paving, or is that include the work that needs to be done?
That's strictly for paving.
That's strictly for paving.
Yes.
Where is it in the budget, either one of you, for the repairs that need to happen to get it up to the standards that we need to, to pave instead of, you know?
Staff do that.
Yeah, 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 we don't have, as a matter of fact, I just went over Middle Mayall Road and Merrill Road are on the list for this coming summer, and what we do is we go check all the driveway culverts, all the cross culverts, where we may need to box cut an area out and refill it with gravel, and we do all that ourselves, and that way I can figure out how much money I need for culverts for that year, but I'll tell you, because we change every, everything to plastic, if, if it's a cross culvert, it gets changed automatically if it's metal, because we don't want to be digging up a road that we just did three years ago because that culvert's failing.
Absolutely, all right.
So, it's, we try to get everything all situated before we start.
Yeah, all right.
Any other questions? Ian?
Yeah, just on, staying on culverts for a moment, I, I know it isn't, you know, critical for every culvert, but where, where a culvert might be subject to greater water flow due to, you know, more severe storms due to climate change, is, is, are we kind of automatically upgrading to larger culverts to accommodate those?
Yes.
We recently went from 12, relatively recently went from 12-inch to 15-inch culverts as a base.
Yes.
That was my recollection, okay, and I, I have another question about road striping and crosswalks, and this is kind of a perennial one, I mean, because we, we tend to not get it, be able to get it done until like end of July or, or something like that.
Yeah, and so, there's only two companies in this state that do line striping, the long roads, and I had a, if you remember correctly, I don't know who was here, but.
Fired one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I.
I'd like to keep it in state, because we get them done a lot quicker. If I would have waited for them, they would have got it done in September or October.
Yeah, right, and I, I, I mean, I, there's the line striping on, I mean, along the, the length of the roads, and then there's the crosswalks, and especially in the village area, it seems like those don't get done until the summer's half over, and I, I think part of it is, because it's always in next year's budget, like, it'll be in the FY26 budget, we don't have money budgeted in, for the, I mean, it got done last summer, so there's not money in this, remaining in this fiscal year to do that.
So, it's funny that you bring that up, because I just talked with the guy that does like the village, the crosswalks and everything, and I have a little bit of money left, so I, I'm able to get him in here sooner this year, so hopefully I can get it done before Memorial Day weekend, just to spruce the town up a little bit before the, before the holiday weekend.
Well, that would be great, because it, it just, it just seems like, you know, summer's half over and then we're in the fall and.
It's true.
Yeah, and then, and then it gets all, you know, destroyed in the winter, sandy stuff, so, no, that's cool, thank you so much, Tim.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just had a few questions, just to follow up on the crosswalks, do we, do we have money budgeted in this line item for crosswalks for any like experimental type work we might want to do in the village? I know we talked about maybe doing that, just like demonstration projects for pedestrians?
We don't have any money budgeted for that here, we've partnered with a grant that GP COG is working on where they're going to evaluate some of those options this year, consult with staff, consult with the community, and that will be done during the next construction season.
Okay.
Not this coming one, the one after that, and there'd be temporary treatments.
All right, and then just kind of back to paving a little bit, I know we did Yarmouth Road, and that was, that was kind of a plus last year.
Yeah, that was, that was to get us by, that was just to get us.
It was pretty, it was pretty bad.
Got to speak into the microphone?
Yeah, it was pretty bad, so I.
That was, that was just to get us by, because we, last spring, a year ago, I went through approximately six pallets of patch, which is roughly $8,000, just between Yarmouth Road and Lewiston Road, and as you know, Lewiston Road got the little shim too, so.
Yes, that's what I was, so my question on that was, we're, I know that we were kind of holding off on doing those, because we were hoping the state would do it as part of the larger Village Transformation Project, where it just keeps getting delayed because of federal funding mechanisms, but were we able to recoup any costs from the DOT since those are state roads to do that?
So, the Lewiston Road part that was overlaid was done by main DOT, because that's a state road, the Yarmouth Road portion is within the urban compact, and so it's a responsibility of us to maintain it, but thankfully, we have the commitment from DOT to help us upgrade and, and repair those roads more permanently, long-term. And there hasn't been any delays in that project due to federal funding or anything, we're right on schedule to apply, and the, the grant program that we hope to participate in is a program that's supported by the current presidential administration, and so hopefully we'll, hopefully we'll be able to, to continue that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the delays I was referencing was, we had a different strategy for funding before you were on board.
Yes, probably.
Yeah, that's not so much now. And then, just one last question, the line item for trees, we have budgeted at $20,000, but it looks like we're utilizing quite a lot less than that over the last few years, so I'm just wondering, what is the expectation for using those funds?
Is that, is that, for what we've expended, is that up to, is that just till December?
Yes.
Because he's done a lot of work for us over the winter, so that is not, that's.
Well, last year, last year we spent $12,000 instead of, not FY25, but FY24, so, just wondering.
Yeah, that, that budget line this year will, there will be hardly anything left in it, I can guarantee you.
Where are you planning to?
We, we just did a bunch on Mayberry Road, there was a, a bunch of dead pines, if you turn in from Route 26 on the left-hand side by the fence, all the way down to, I forget the name of the road, but, but anyways, they took eight big pine trees down for us.
Okay, so it's, it's not just tree.
And this was like in Jan, the end of January-ish.
Right, it's not just tree planting, it's also like maintenance.
No, this is, actually, that is just bad trees around town.
Okay, all right.
If I may add, also, this is dependent upon the availability of the contractor that we work with, and so for instance, last year, folks may recall, we had a number of fairly damaging storms that, especially just in the Libby Hill Trails, took our town staff months and months to clean up, so when a contractor that does a lot of tree work, they focus on the more emergency situations, and so hopefully, the person will be more available in this fiscal year, but at the end of fiscal year 24, we had those storms, and I think Tim just wasn't able to get that person to do a lot of that work in the spring.
Okay.
But we're, we're on track to hopefully better utilize that account in a more appropriate manner.
Okay, yeah, no, I just, we had, could have some cost savings, just trying to identify, but it sounds like we'll be utilizing it, and I know the storms often bring trees down, so.
It, I don't like to spend that line right down to the last dollar, because if we have a major emergency, which I used them two years ago, with a major windstorm, it's impossible for us to go around town cleaning trees up that are blocking roads and stuff, so I can hire him, and he will end up, he'll come in, he's actually done it twice for me, the following day, and help us clean up trees and open roads. So I don't, I like to keep a, just a little buffer in there, I don't like to spend, say I'm going to spend the whole $20,000 by the beginning of March, so then I have April, May, and June, if something like that happens, then I have no money to.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Anyone else?
That was all I had.
Just one quick question I have, going back to striping real quick, we used to be able to, we used to have some money in the budget where we could stripe in the spring, we stripe in the fall, price of striping went through the roof, that disappeared. Price of striping went through the roof. That disappeared. I'd be curious to know, one, what it would take to get back to that. And two, the village transformation plan, along with some of the other changes that may happen on, uh, Yarmouth Road, are probably going to increase our striping budget. And I'd be curious to know what the impact of our current plan, um, will do to those, to those costs.
Are you talking the long lines or both? Are you talking?
Yeah. If you look at the, if you look at the VTP plans now that MDOT is working with, there's more striping and, and crosswalk work there than there currently is. And so I would just, you know, it's not an urgent matter by any means, but I'd be curious to know what that will do to the striping budget when that plan gets realized.
If we were to do it twice now, you'd be talking around 150, 160,000.
We only, I think, did the village the second time. Is the way we did it because it did so much traffic, it wore out the crosswalk lines.
Right.
So I don't think it would be doubling the budget, but it would be good to know what it would be, what it would take to be able to do the village twice a year, I guess is what I'm asking.
Yep.
And we'll have the plan for that in the future.
Yeah, absolutely.
When that, but we, we don't know exactly right now. We don't know what costs would be, you know, five years from now if we, if we see that project to completion.
But I would be curious to know what it would cost us today if we redid the, if we redid just the village twice a year instead of once a year.
So you want us to get an estimate on that?
I can get an estimate on that for you.
I think, yeah, it, you know, I don't know if we can afford it, but it would be good to know. I don't know how big a number that is.
We, we can get an estimate on that if that's something that the council wants to add to the budget.
Would other people be interested in that or not concerned?
Yeah. Yeah, they do wear away pretty quickly. Yeah.
Thank you.
And if I may, I just wanted to add to the paving discussion that in the years ahead, we'll look to try to have another evaluation done of our road conditions. And there's a number of options to do that in addition to Goral Palmer who we work with. Um, there's some new technologies out there that we can evaluate the conditions through like a street scanning technology. And we'll, we'll continue to explore those in the years ahead as, as we work on that.
Um, just checking, oh, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
And I just got word today, and I sent you an email earlier on it, that we got approved for two flashing speed limit, uh, school zone speed limit signs for Russell School and for Fiddleheads.
Oh, that's awesome.
So it's going to take care of both schools with two signs.
That's awesome. Yeah. Thank you for prioritizing that. Yeah.
Um, just to check in, we've got, um, solid waste facilities, parks, capital improvement. Are we going to need to hang on to anybody here for the capital improvement if we kick that later in the show?
If, if, if I can continue quickly, I have, um, the capital improvement connected to the specific department. So the next page I have on my slides is the capital improvements for Public Works specific.
Okay.
Since they were here. And then we can kind of just talk about the CIP program as a whole.
Well, I was just wondering if we wanted to help the parks and facilities people and, and, uh, solid waste get out the door before our regular meeting.
And if we, if we can do that, I have those, those specific CIP items connected. We could talk about them while they're here. And then I'll talk about the CIP as a big picture if we, if we have to put that off.
Great, thank you.
So just, um, real quick for the Public Works CIP, um, that you've seen, uh, in the CIP, proposed CIP, is we need to replace the fuel tanks as part of our, uh, fuel island in Public Works. Um, they've exceeded their lifespan and they begin to, begin to show failure. They have some protection mechanisms in them to prevent environmental issues, but we need to get to them so that we can resolve those, um, failures and, and get that resolved. And so that, that we've estimated for a budget of $321,163. And that includes about a 20% contingency on the specific project that we've been estimated for. Um, in addition to the estimate we received is only good for a certain amount of time and we won't be able to engage in a contract until the budget's approved. So, um, we, we built in that contingency. And then lastly, for Public Works, we have a proposal to replace, uh, two 2014 trucks within the fleet for an estimated cost of $650,000. We're going to, once we are able to work on RFPs and things like that, we'll see if we can find some ways to save some money with some alterations to our current truck structure. But one of the things, other than these two vehicles, the rest of the entire, uh, essentially dump truck fleet or plow truck fleet, for a lack of a better way to describe, was all purchased from a 2018 bond. And so you replace the entire fleet at once, which we're still paying that bond. And so that's not a, a process we would recommend going forward, just because it, from a replacement schedule perspective, it creates a challenge. So we're going to be proposing to, over the next couple of years, potentially budget for two or three, um, trucks in a budgetary cycle. We're going to try to develop a way that we can fund those without borrowing. Um, but we wanted to just let the council know that that's something that's coming. In addition, planning to replace these 2014 trucks, we get authorization and we, we borrow the money, um, for them. It's there probably 18 to 24 months out. So they need time to build those trucks. And so the ordering cycle, that's one part that's still delayed. So we're planning for replacing 2014s that we may not see. If we're lucky, we might see them in some time in 2026, but we may not.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
And so those are the, the two items for Public Works CIP and we can answer any questions if anyone has.
I'll just put a nod in there that, that wasn't what was supposed to happen with the 2018 bond, but unfortunately that is what happened. So we just go on from there. Yes.
How many trucks total are in the fleet?
Big trucks. Just, just, just give me one second. Cause I can picture how they're parked in each bay. There's seven between single X trucks and wheelers. And we have one spare single X truck, which is one of the ones that's due to get replaced, which was my old truck when I first started here.
Okay, um, so in terms of, cause I get the staggering of replacements because otherwise it's kind of a nightmare, obviously doing them all at once. Um, but these two trucks that we're replacing, how badly does that, are they in need, I guess, is my question.
They're very, the frames are very rusted on them. And as they get, most towns do 10-year replacements and, but we're on a 12-year. They rarely should go in 10, but we've been doing 12. So they're, they're at their max. Yeah, and the increase of repairs in the way the diesel engines are built nowadays almost cost double than they did 20 years ago.
So that was going to be my next question. So you answered that.
And so that's one of the reasons why we're forecasting increased repair lines as well, is because of the continued escalating costs. So we want to make sure we queue up this fleet for replacement.
And will you explain for the folks at home what a wheeler is?
No. I'm sorry. It has, it has eight dual wheel, it has four sets of dual wheels in, in the back and the single X only has two.
Yeah, it's a larger truck.
Yes.
Just wanted people to understand what that was. Thank you. Yes, Krista?
Um, so we're, the total cost for the two trucks this year is $650,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not 650 each?
No, total cost.
Because on the, on the summary sheets we have for the capital projects, it, it says FY26 budget 650, total budget 650, and then project total 1.3 million. So what is the?
Which page are you looking at?
Uh, it's on the packet, page 87. I, I didn't.
It's in the PDF?
In the PDF, yeah. Um, it's the, it's, I don't know how to describe it. It's like the, uh, you have the summary where you list it all out and then there's the sheets where it kind of expand on what you're, what you're buying.
Is that because of the next year of trucks that you're forecasting too? Cause I get, I see that on the.
Oh, yeah, I, I forecasted out. So the ClearGov module has ability to do multi-year capital budgeting. And so if you look on the project specific, um, for, um, the capital projects, uh, under the Public Works and Town Vehicles section.
Mm-huh.
Um, and if you click on that actual project, it shows, um, I put it in as next year as well. So, um, for fiscal year 27, for, for all the years, it would be 1.3 million. So I just wanted, I just wanted it to show the future year. And those other trucks we may need to replace in the future might it come with a higher cost?
Yeah.
So we're only budgeting, when we talk about the CIP as a whole, um, I'll show you the, the collective budget and you'll only see the 650,000 budgeted.
Okay.
So I apologize, some of the way ClearGov states things and efforts to show other information. You'll see the same thing happen on the Stillwater Recreation.
Yeah.
We've put money aside and it shows the project as being more money. But we're only putting so much money aside this year and we put money aside in the previous fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Cause I just wanted, I was not totally clear on how much it was. So that's helpful.
It's part of our learning curve with the new system.
Yeah.
Anyone else? All set? Thank you.
And with that, uh, we'll move to recycling and solid waste. Um, so this position, um, this department includes positions of director of $86,400, assistant director of $59,700, as well as transfer station attendants. Uh, we're budgeting a 4.5 full-time positions and three part-time, which is a total of $202,100. Um, it's an increase in just under one FTE full-time equivalent position for fiscal year 26. We have, um, a part-time position that existed at eight hours a week that we're increasing to 24 hours a week. So that's an increase of 16 hours a week. And then I'm proposing the addition of a full-time, uh, position to start January 1st, um, with the goal to have that position cycle through the schedule to, uh, better check for, uh, transfer station permits, um, on a, on a, on a, like an unpredictable basis. Um, and so, and it's also to support the increased, uh, traffic we're seeing at the transfer station. This community continues to grow and the increase in tonnage and increase in recycling. And so the, the transfer station, I think, has been staffed on a model for a community of about 5,000 people. And the transfer station was built for a community of about 5,000 people and we're slowly approaching 10,000 people. So we want to try to best maximize those resources to ensure the staff is able to handle all the stuff they do in a safe manner. And that's, it's a very, very, uh, labor-intensive job, um, that those folks have there. And we want to be able to support them with that. And also support the staff. It's very difficult for them to take time off. Um, they earn time off, they deserve time off. And with the, so that's why we're proposing this structure to be able to support, um, the staff to be able to take time off there. Um, so there is, so the numbers that you see in the budget, uh, are going to be slightly different when I produce the final budget numbers. Because we had a, an employee that transferred from the recycling and solid waste department to our facilities and parks department. And they were included in there and it wasn't in, the, it's a custodian position. It wasn't included in the facilities and parks budget. So those are offset and adjusting the, the estimated wages due to vacancies and things of that nature. Those tweaks are some of the things I'll present later on in the meeting, um, for total numbers. And then the other things that continue to happen is tipping fees, um, increasing, which is the, the tonnage. EcoMaine, who's our partner in that, those rates continue to rise and incorporate the costs associated with bonds that they've undertaken that I've outlined to the, to the, um, council before. And then equipment repairs and rentals, um, continue to increase as well. And that's the recycling and solid waste budget. And our director, uh, Randy is here to answer any questions if anyone has anything specific.
Questions?
So, yeah, I had a question. You, did you just say that we're looking to hire somebody to specifically check for permits?
So the, the position that we're looking to hire is to help with processing recycling. But the goal is going to be to have somebody better check for permits on a, on a cycled basis. So it'll be unexpected. And we'll hopefully have them check for those permits at the entryway when people come in. So we can kind of, um, maybe address some of the concerns that members of the community and I think the council has had in the past about that. The staff does a great job to check as much as they can, but they're busy. They're, they're, they're dealing with people that come in. They've got to monitor the, the, everything that goes on. Um, and then maybe over time, the word will get out that we check. Um, it's common knowledge in other communities that you can maybe come to Gray and get away with coming in, uh, without it. Like I said, our staff does the best job that they can to avoid that, but you, you can't specifically encounter every single person.
Yeah, that's not their job. But I, um, what do we bring in for revenue, um, for, uh, permits every year?
So in collectively, um, or for just permits, um, I'll have to look that up.
So about 35,000. So does it really make sense, I guess in my eyes, that we sell permits? Why don't we just give every town, uh, person that when they pay their taxes, they get a permit? We don't spend the money on checking and maintaining this and we'd save a lot more money than, than. Do you see where I'm going with that? I just don't see, that just doesn't make any sense to me. Now, if we need that position to do other things, I agree with it. But just, you know, if the majority of the job is to check permits.
That's not the majority of the job. That's not what I said.
Yeah. I, I think also if, if we're not checking permits, and this has been a problem before, then, and then we're getting, even if we don't ask for a fee for those permits, we're getting people from other communities, um, and potentially contractors coming here that, that are not supposed to be dumping. And then we're paying higher costs in hauling fees and tipping fees. So, um, yeah.
I would hope that we would, as we can, as best we can, kind of keep track of, you know, I mean, obviously someone pulls in and they see someone checking permits and they turn around and drive away again is obviously probably somebody who shouldn't be coming here. It would be good to try and find some way to measure the value of doing that. But I agree. I think, um, we are an easy mark. People know we have a great transfer station. And I don't doubt at all that our sand pile also is, uh, is, is a victim of, of being used by, by other people who know it's there. So. I think it's a, a good thing to, to find out about. But I think we have to try and collect the data too, so we know in the future if it, if it's worth doing.
Yeah, cause that's one of the complaints I've heard a lot from, from people is that why am I paying for?
Some people choose to have, you know, to pay somebody to come get their trash. I mean.
Yeah.
We always get people saying, how come we, you know, moved to Gray and how come we don't have curbside pickup kind of thing? So to some extent, it, it, you know, it, it evens that out. Those of us that use the, the transfer station pay another five bucks. I don't think that's a bad thing we sell, but.
And that's a policy decision if the council doesn't want to, to have a permit system. You know, it, it's just a, a tool to be able to regulate who comes in and out. And if we issue one permit to, through every, the property tax bill, which we could potentially do, then we could still sell other permits. We would just have to reduce our revenues associated with that. Um, and then, you know, if, if a, if a family wants to have a second permit on their vehicle or things of that nature. And it's hard because people might say, I have a permit, but it's on my wife's car, not on my car, or vice versa. It just, it creates a conversation that sometimes sidetracks the staff from doing the, the critical work they need to do.
No, and that's my fear honestly is that it sidetracks them. You know what I mean? That's why, and I agree totally with what you're saying, Krista. We don't want people going in there, but I just, it's probably not the right place to have the conversation tonight. But I think there's definitely a better way to do this than, than what we're doing today.
Yeah, we've tossed around a variety of ideas the last few years, you know, like a gate where people can scan themselves, you know, themselves in. But that's, they're cost prohibitive.
With their tax bill though, people do get a, essentially a punch card that lets you take, you know, tires and other things to, that everyone does get. So there is that, that piece of it. And those are things that usually there's an additional fee for on top of it. It's kind of a, a foot in one boat, each boat.
I, I love, Mike knows I love the, my transfer station.
Anybody else? A lot of people do.
No, that's all I had.
I guess we're running up against the clock, but I think we should just continue to finish and we'll start our regular meeting a little later.
Are there, are there any other improvements? Um, I know that we had, had planned for improvements to like the, the roof and stuff like that. What's the status of those improvements at the transfer station?
We don't have any scheduled right now.
But those are all the.
Oh, the, the, for the snow?
Yeah.
Those are still pending. We have a lot of pending projects with limited staff to, to do those. So there's some money still set aside for that, that we'll, we'll look to try to deal with. We did the drainage project, um, which has resulted in huge improvements.
Yeah.
Um, so we're, we're hopeful that with that and the better staffing, that things will run a little bit smoother at, at, at that facility.
Okay. But so you think that those, the, the snow improvements will happen before next winter or when you, are you?
I'm not sure the exact timing on that. That hasn't been the most critical project that we've had pending. So.
But those funds are still in the capital reserve for when we're embarking on it.
We'll make sure they're accounted for in the capital reserves, yes.
That's a whole nother conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're not going to have that now.
No.
Okay.
So thank you for entertaining us for facilities and parks so we can, uh, send these folks home. Um, this, uh, department includes the director, $91,700, the assistant director of $68,200, laborers of $167,100. Um, I forgot to mention this department as well as our public works department. We had added some positions half year and last budget. So we're, we're made, those are full in this year. And then the custodian position at $51,600. And as I mentioned in. at fifty-one thousand six hundred. And as I mentioned in our last budget, there'll be some tweaks with the transferred position that I talked about that an employee moved. But major increases in this budget are utilities and supplies, as identified earlier in multiple budget presentations, the water is increasing ten percent per the gray water district from an increase that they passed on last August and we'll, we need to fully absorb that as part of this budget. And our director, Mo Russo, is here, who I'll also share later on in the meeting as the facilities, or the parks and recreation professional of the year from the main parks, park, main parks and recreation association.
That's awesome.
And I'll share that. But Mo's been at that conference for that recognition and, and to advance himself, so he's not going to stay for the council meeting, so he can get home to hopefully read to the kids since he's been gone a couple days.
The only thing I guess I would want to point out for anybody who's looking at the budget, especially through the ClearGov site on the town's website, is the change as far as how we're handling water and electricity. And there's been a, there's been a big change to this budget for those items that used to be spread all around through the.
So we're showing for each separate facility, their water usage.
Right. They've all been consolidated here in the parks and facilities budget.
Right, right. And same with, same with, it's like heating fuel and electricity and those, all the.
Yep.
All those operating costs.
So there's a lot more line items in this budget than there used to be. Any other questions, though?
If I may, can I go over the CIP projects real quick while Mo's also here?
I think that's probably where we have most questions.
So we, we, we set, set out with the CIP this year with, specifically with cities and parks, to do some projects that won't take a ton of our staff because we have a lot of pending projects. So we want to try to take the next fiscal year to get caught up on a lot of pending projects, i.e. the one we just talked about at the, the transfer station. But, so we're proposing a public works and recycling and solid waste, our transfer station building, the water heaters need to be replaced there for a total of thirty thousand dollars for both those facilities. And then, as the town council will recall in previous years, we've been updating the alarm systems in all our town facilities and the next facility to tackle is public works. So we have sixteen thousand budgeted for that. And then for public safety, we're looking to relocate the Plimo vent system, which it's a, that's a trademark name of a system that, that you hook the exhaust to a fire truck up, so when you pull it indoors, the, it sucks the exhaust, the remaining exhaust out externally to not have that, that remain in the building while people are inside the building. And so we have that system at the village, the old village station that facilities and parks has and uses, and we're going to move that system to the dry mills station. And I didn't put the total amount on the, my slide, but it was ten thousand dollars to do that. And then our recreation department, we're budgeting for, to replace the, the lighting in the New Begin Gymnasium for twelve thousand dollars. And the continued set aside for Stillwater improvements for the town's portion of things that need to do for the Stillwater Recreation Fields of a hundred and fifty thousand, where we set aside last year a hundred thousand in last year's budget. And then lastly, facilities and parks, security camera for five thousand dollars. And when we go through the CIP in general, I'll go over the funding strategy surrounding all those. But if you have any questions specifically about these projects, Mo can answer those as well.
Questions? Krista?
I just was curious what, what we are upgrading in the New Begin Gym for lighting? Is it, is there switching to LED? Is there some sort of feature that these?
So a number of years ago, the lighting in the gym was switched to LED.
Okay.
Those were early generation LED lighting and they are failing.
Oh.
When the electrical contractor began replacing them last year, it was discovered that we were going to need to rewire all of the lightings, all the lighting in the gym as well, because it will not, it is due to be replaced based on the age of the building.
Okay.
So that's why, that's part of the cost of it.
Okay, so it's, it's rewiring in addition to upgrading the LED lights?
Correct, yeah.
Anyone else?
Can that be done?
Yeah.
How, how long will that take? It seems like that could interrupt operations in the gym.
They replaced just the lighting fixture, like half the lighting fixtures last year, took two days to do that. So it'll probably take about a week.
Okay.
So we'll probably try to tie it to a point at the end where in summer camp is over, before we recoat the floor.
Okay.
So that way it's minimal interruption.
Makes sense.
Anyone else? Mike?
Yeah, security, security cameras, things like that. I see you have a little bit in here. I've looked around. I, I think, you know, there's definitely a need to upgrade the security cameras in this facility to protect our staff and also the children out there. It doesn't look like there's that much in this budget. Have you looked at doing that or?
So we have a number of cameras in the gym. We have cameras located here in this building and in the exterior. We're potentially looking at, as part of the manual arts conversion, adding cameras under that project. But this one is specific for the facilities and parks building.
Down by the post office.
Okay, but not here?
Not here.
Anyone else? Krista?
So the Stillwater Recreation Fields allotment, that is just putting money aside for, for future upgrades or are we, what are we using that for this year?
So when the contract zone was established and the agreement was created, there's a lot of gray areas to what the town is responsible for and what the con, for the developer is responsible for. This is that gap to cover. So they will build the field, but if, we need to irrigate the field, so we are responsible for the cost of bringing that water line all the way in.
Okay.
This is the cost for bringing electricity onto the complex. There's a number of things that have been identified through the engineering review that the developer is stating that isn't part of the agreement. And we are waiting to have a conversation with the developer to really pinpoint what we have to cover and what they are covering.
Okay.
But I can just add that when we created the CZA for that, there wasn't any, the idea of developing that lot was sort of TBD into the future.
Yeah.
There wasn't any expectation at that time that we would actually build out, if you will, the rest of that lot. So that's the in-between stuff that Mo's working on now. A lot of time has gone by that development, that, the second phase of that development's been delayed for a couple of years now, actually. So I think that it's the need or the, the opportunity to finish that field has come sooner, I think, than we expected it would when we created the CZA.
So what is the timeline for that being a useful space for the community at this point?
Theoretically, it would be turned over to the town this summer. We would not hold programming on it this summer because we'd want that field to fully grow and take shape. But the important part of that is to be able to irrigate it regularly. So that's, so it would be next year.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's sooner than I was anticipating.
It is sooner than I think any of us thought, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Okay. That, that's, that makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else? That's all set. Thank you, Mo.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we can tackle the rest of the CIP conversation as part of our second workshop.
Okay.
Do you want to take a quick break?
Yeah, on that note, we'll close the workshop. We will reconvene for our regularly scheduled meeting at seven fifteen. Here's about seven minutes. Thank you. Remember, we're still on the air.
If we can get back on the air, please.
There we are. Thank you very much. Welcome to the Gray Town Council meeting of regularly scheduled meeting of March 18th, 2025. This meeting will be held in person online with a link provided in the agenda's header. Residents wishing to participate in a public hearing or public comment portions of the agenda may do so by clicking in to participate or call using the number provided during the public hearing or public comments as detailed in the agenda. Public hearings won't be held prior to 7:00 PM. We've met that goal. So we'll move on. I'll start with roll call. Ian?
Present.
Krista?
Present.
Levi?
Present.
Mike?
Present.
Dan McGuire, Chair of the Town Council, and to my right is Town Manager Foley. If you would stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We don't have this on our agenda, but it is, but I would like to amend the agenda to add something to it. The item will be to discuss filling a vacancy on the council. I need a motion from someone to do that. And then it would take at least four fifths of us to vote in order to amend the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
And just procedurally, we take that up under new business, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yep, we'll take that. Take that up under new business. Next, we move on to the approval of the minutes for our March 4th, 2025 meeting. I'll take a motion to, or I guess I need a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
So motion Krista, second Levi. Are there any adjustments or corrections to the minutes?
No.
Seeing none, is there any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. We'll go on to council communication and start with the report from the chair. I had several conversations with people this week. Well, that's more correspondence. I'll just jump right into it. I am resigning my position on the council at the end of tonight's meeting in order to, I had hoped to stay through until the end of this fiscal year or until the June elections. Unfortunately, the way the charges written, the council can't vote to replace me until I actually resign. So I feel very strongly that I would like to be replaced by a vote of folks in town because nominations are currently open for council positions. If I resign now and the council, the council has the opportunity to put my vacancy on the ballot in June. The council has the authority to fill my vacancy, but I'm really hoping that you'll choose to put it on the ballot as opposed to filling it yourselves, which is one of the reasons why I'm doing this tonight earlier than I'd hoped to. But that's, that's sort of where we're, where we're at. We'll take it up, the discussion up later in new business. So you can decide then, but that'll be the decision that we have to make later tonight. Other than that, I don't really have anything else to report from the council chairs. So I'll open it up to council correspondents and committee reports. Ian, can we start with you?
Sure. Let's see. Open space met last Wednesday and we had a couple of visitors. Adam Wilkinson presented data on tax increases for owners of large parcels that have landlocked sort of back lots. They have no deeded road access. And he sort of showed us how increases resulting from recent significant increases in the real estate values just across the board, across Maine, as well as the revale in 2019 and the recent rebalancing had really dramatically increased the property tax, taxes for those landowners. And, and you know, it used to be they were able to sort of keep up with tax increases by selling stumpage or, you know, selling trees off their lots, but that doesn't cover the cost anymore. So the impact on open space is that, you know, they, they may not be that interested in working with the town to conserve open space if their taxes are, you know, hard for them to keep up with. So it's just a, it was a really good discussion. I really appreciate Adam's time. And, and so we'll, we'll talk about that some more. Steve Woodpike was also there to talk about his sort of concept of a greenway in Gray, so that was sort of through Libby Hill. So that was a really fun and interesting discussion. You'll probably hear more about that in the months to come. Resiliency Committee, work is continuing on the Community Action Grant. The Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District has made substantial progress on collecting and analyzing data for the Watership Management Plan. And our resilience fellow, Audrey Piper, has completed the script and the voiceover for the first video and is working to kind of put that one together. She sent out a draft of that today. And she's also getting to work on the next video. We're continuing to consult with the town staff on the phosphorus ordinance and have a meeting on that tomorrow. Nothing new in the VTP this, this, in the last couple of weeks. I attended a Vision Zero workshop with Cumberland County, it was actually a meeting of the Advisory Committee for the Vision Zero at Greater Portland Council of Governments. And just very generally, the goal of Vision Zero is zero traffic deaths, or zero deaths from traffic crashes. So that's pedestrian and bike as well as people in the vehicles. And I, I attended the task force meeting. Those are going to happen on a quarterly basis going forward. One new thing I learned is that GP Cog is working on creating a Greater Portland Trail Network, these sort of interconnected trails, starting with the 17 towns that make up the PAX region, which Gray is not part of, which always infuriates me, but it's not their fault. And
Short editorial.
Yeah. And they hope to have the initial mapping done by early fall. And I just, you know, they were, they spent some time talking about how there have been six preventable pedestrian traffic deaths in Portland in the last six months, which is way more than they usually have. So, you know, pedestrian safety is a, is a huge issue and I'm glad that we have a lot of support for doing that in Gray. C-TAC didn't meet this month, so.
Thank you very much. Krista?
Yeah, I just, I, I'll move on to committees, but I just want to take a minute to acknowledge your resignation, Dan, and just offer my support. I know it's a difficult decision, but you need to do, you know, what's best for your circumstances. But I also just want to take a minute to thank you for all the time and energy and thoughtfulness you've dedicated to our town and our community. So, thank you.
Over many years. Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
The Ordinance Advisory Committee met on March 10th where we reviewed takeaways from the three workshops that were held around town in regards to the proposed zoning outside of the village. Doug Webster, who is managing that project, our planning director, is proposing some amendments based on that feedback that we've heard. And we will be, the committee and will be presenting those changes to the council at an upcoming workshop in early April. There's nothing too dramatic to change, but it does amend some of the, potentially some of the commercial districts we identified and other zones. So there will be some changes. The Blueberry Festival, Wild Blueberry Festival Committee also met on March 10th. That was a busy evening where we, they continue to look at logistics. They're also submitting a grant to the main arts commission to do a large mural project as part of the festival this year. It'll be kind of a community painting event where we can then install panels that were painted in a to be determined location. But it sounds like a fun and really engaging event that will, the mural will focus on, you know, the theme of wild blueberries, but it certainly will be hopefully a beautiful community art project. The Blueberry Festival Committee will meet again on April 14th, and Ordinance Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet on April 7th after the council workshop. I just want to note it also, well, let me first cover GP Cog. Greater Portland Council of Governments met this afternoon. We had some updates on their funding streams, which continue to be in flux, but they're just trying to take it as they come regarding the federal grants that they are, that are sometimes available and then occasionally they're gone again. But they don't have any immediate impacts to staff at this time. They did, they did look into a regional effort around invasive plants. I mentioned that again. They went back and discussed it as a staff and didn't really feel they had a good understanding of how they could address that regionally. But they did consider maybe doing some sort of cooperative purchasing for maybe like manual pulling of plants. But if we wanted to pursue that here locally any further, it would probably be something we would need to do independently. Also, they're planning a, we've been meeting as kind of like the Northern Region Group with neighboring towns with Durham, Powell, North Yarmouth, Gloucester.
Yes.
They also have a regional convening they host kind of with the Greater Bridgeton Communities. They're planning a joint session for these like northern area, sometimes they call it the Greater Gray, which is, so they're, they're doing a joint convening of Greater Gray with Greater Bridgeton, where we were both struggling with potential, in, potential interest for like how to address mooring issues and also houseboats in our large lakes and what that would mean for employing a harbor master, which is not something most communities are willing to put the bill for. So we're going to just have a conversation regionally about what that might look like for a solution. And then we just want to reiterate that GP Cog is available for any kind of consulting we might be in need of, which I know Mike has been using very heavily, which is great. Sometimes those are part of our membership dues, but sometimes they're a little extra, but certainly at a much reduced cost than other types of consulting services. But, you know, it's also in this uncertain funding future, important to think of GP Cog as a resource for those types of projects. And then I just want to mention, I attended as a part of my other professional role for the organization I work at, a large landowner event in the town of Cumberland last week. And they focus mostly on forestry and land management and also agricultural stewardship. But they had a number of presenters that I felt were really relevant to the town we might want to engage with on coming here. One was forest, foresters who do forest management plans for public lands. So they have a lot of public land in Cumberland. But it made me realize, I don't think we have a current forest management plan for Libby Hill, which might be something we might want to look into just going forward. And then there was another gentleman there who presented on maintenance of invasive plants, which was really informative. And even if we don't pursue him, his services, I think maybe just having him in for a presentation would be useful if we do decide to, you know, pursue some sort of strategy around management. So anyway, that's not a committee, but I thought it was of interest. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Levi?
I didn't have any committees that met or any correspondents, but I also want to thank Dan for his years of service and time.
Thank you. Mike?
I finally have a committee. So the Finance Committee met today. I think we're finally, not finally, I don't want to say it that way, but I think we're going in the right direction. We've got some really good new software we're using. It's really helping us. We've got Bob and others that are on the committee that are helping us move in the right direction. I think over the next few months, we're going to get it a lot more productive than where it has been in the past, thanks to Mike and Dan and Bob and others on that committee. And I think, you know, Justin and her team's done a really nice job. I did have a correspondence from Mike Bailey. He sent me an email with some concerns about the budget, and he asked me to reach out to him. I did talk to him for a little while, and I encouraged him strongly to come to the meeting and express his opinion here and get up and talk.
Great. Thank you. I was also at Finance today. I think I'll just put it on your radar that I think there'll be some discussion in the future about how we handle warrants, what with the changes we've made, made with accounting staff and the accounting procedures, what with the active work that our consultant or contractor is doing on our audits to get us up to date. I think there's some room to streamline and improve that process, which I think you'll hear more about in the future. The Planning Board did meet and thanked the council for one of its shortest meetings on record because all they had on their agenda was a public hearing for this residential solar ordinance to which there were no participants. So we, this is the second go around to that because of the substantial changes that the council made. ZBA will not be meeting this month. The next Planning Board meeting is April 10th. And if they need to meet, the next Zone Board of Appeals meeting will be April 23rd. I had some conversations with people about the budget. I think there was some confusion. I think there's a new system there that we're learning to use. I've pointed a lot of people to the town's website. The FY26 budget is out there. The new ClearGov software will give people access and insight to the budget that frankly, we've never ever been able to provide people before. So that's been a huge plus. But that's all I have for correspondents and committees tonight. Moving on to the next portion of our budget is a report from our town manager.
Thank you for the town manager's report. I just have a few brief slides I want to go through. First of all, I just want to remind everybody about the table talk with the town manager that occurs on the first Monday of every month at noon time at Two Moms Kitchen. And our friends at Two Moms have offered free coffee for anyone that comes in for that. But opportunity to try out a new business and, you know, talk with me in a low key setting. Also want to remind anyone, if anyone wants to meet with me at any time, any place, I'm willing to schedule those and adjust my schedule to accommodate those for people to be able to do. So you don't have to wait for that. Want to remind everyone about some open positions we have here in the town. We have a open position in, in recycling and solid waste at the transfer station that we're hoping to fill. We have three firefighter EMT positions that are available, and we're hoping to fill those as well. And then we have some open positions at the library that we've had a lot of interest in. So hopefully we'll get that position filled fairly quickly in our youth services area of the library so we can continue those services, those well-regarded services that the community appreciates. Just want to remind everyone, I know Council Chapel mentioned this about the zoning feedback workshops. We had a number of workshops in February that were attended by members of the community. And the Town Council will be having, talking about that as part of their workshop on April 1st at 5:30. And then remind everyone about the budget review schedule, which we're in the thick of right now. We've had a number of meetings in the recent weeks. And tonight we'll finish a review of departments. And then next month, on April 1st, we'll have our Town Council meeting where we'll hear an update from the MSAD 15. And we'll have a public hearing on the draft budget warrants that hopefully we can maybe conclude some numbers this evening. And then the Town Council meeting on April 15th at 7:00 PM will have approval of the annual budget warrants. And the referendum town meeting scheduled for June 10th, Election Day. And in between June 10th and April 15th, we'll work to try to educate the community about the budget and the improvements in the software and things of that nature that we've had. We look forward to doing that again to hopefully have a successful referendum. And then I just wanted to mention, as I mentioned real quickly while Mo was still here, last night, we had, or we went, attended the Maine Parks and Recreation Association Conference. Working with Anthony, we submitted a nomination for Mo to be the Parks and Recreation Professional of the Year. And as we'll share in a moment, the introduction, we had to tell Mo a little white lie to get him, get him to the conference. But there's a photo of the event and Chris in the back is going to share a video of the event for everyone to see.
Where was the event held?
It was held at the Samset Resort. Another late night for me, Bob.
Okay, this next award is for the Parks Professional of the Year. And for this award, I'd like to call out Town Manager from Gray, Michael Foley, and Recreation Director, Anthony Johns.
Surprise, Mo. So we had to tell Mo a little white lie to get him up here. We told him we were getting the Facility Emerred Award, which, which I think worked because Mo is the Director of Facilities and Parks, and he keeps our spaces in such great shape. Mo is someone that works hard, efficiently, and under the radar. He's our fixture, our getter-dunner, someone that rarely says no while pondering a solution to whatever new complex problem that has just popped up. Mo will always choose the right thing to do versus the easy thing to do. He thinks about the user experience. He consults with others on decision-making that affects their spaces. He shows up every single day despite having to deal with literal, shall we call it, aging plumbing. I've only worked in Gray since 2021, and in just my few years, Mo has done so much to improve the recreation experience of others. Our community center slash gym was built in 1937, so he's always patching that back together. By the way, our ceiling sprung a leak this morning, but I didn't want to tell you until now because I wanted to make sure you got here. Other, other notable things Mo's been responsible for include opening a playground, which is the only non-school public playground in our community. After that, he obtained his CPSI to maintain our new playground. He appeased our pickleball players by installing shades for our indoor courts. Extend, yeah, for real. Saves me a lot of phone calls. Extending and maintaining our trail networks throughout the community, grooming winter trails and maintaining the ice rink, which have both had more users this year than I've ever seen. Managing the construction of a new outdoor basketball court that includes three pickleball courts that are slated to open this spring. Starting early and staying late for special events. Maintaining our local beach. And I could go on and on, but I'll, I'll end on this before I hand things to Mike. Mo, there's no one else I'd rather fight Canadian geese with. Great job, Anthony. Thank you. It's a pleasure to join Anthony in presenting Mo with this incredible award. Although I've only worked with Mo for just over a year, I found him and his staff to be extremely attentive and dedicated. Mo's over a decade of experience in this profession, along with all that Anthony covered, highlights his unwavering commitment to excellence. His leadership and involvement in the community with the many hats he wears, some of which Anthony covered, but I'll add a few more. Project manager, contractor, painter, custodian, field manager, trail master, gardener, decorator, festival organizer, and so on, demonstrate his dedication, and we are fortunate to have someone like Mo as part of our team. Mo's contributions have significantly advanced our organization's mission and make, making him truly deserving of this award. Congratulations, Mo.
Thank you for, Kyle, for joining us at last evening's event to be able to document that moment and so we could share with you. And Kyle has, has shared that on social media as well. We were thankfully able to get his wife to also join us for that special honor as well. So we were very excited that our, our work to also have him as well as a member of his team there without him knowing the true reason. It was very exciting to be able to honor him and the great work that he does in the community. That's all I have this evening, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Thank you. Very enjoyable. We will move Sure, thank you. Very enjoyable. We will move on now to public comments on non-agenda items. Citizens are, have a right and are encouraged to speak during public comment regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. All comments are, and comments are limited to not more than three minutes, but certainly have the ability to extend that if we need to. For a few more minutes, any person who has additional things that they would like to stay with us, to say to us, or welcome to stay until the end of the meeting, and we'll, we will stay to hear whatever it is that people have to say. And I would just say that this is also open to members of the public who may be watching online or at home, and they can call the number or sign into the meeting as it appears on our agenda. Is there anyone here tonight for public comment on non-agenda items? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
I'm Fran Monroe, citizen tonight as, I'm Lewiston Row, 50-year resident. So I happened to watch last council workshop, I guess, or meeting. It was a workshop, I guess. And I watched it a few times to make sure I got what I heard correct. There was a mention that regarding the school budget, and that there was an undefined estimate calculation, and that that information was provided by the school district. So I'm here to question the reason why someone would make a public announcement of something that the school board did not have any information on. In fact, we just had the first looking at the budget the following evening, which was Wednesday. This meeting happened on Tuesday. I think it's very unprofessional for a leader of a community to send out information that is not accurate, and that had not been provided by the department that should have been providing the information. And we need to watch that. It could have caused a lot of controversy on, on the Facebook page, and because as everyone would, well, as most people would suggest, you know, 10% seems to, we turned that down last year, the citizens did. So it was just infancy stages that we're at, and yet, the town manager made it sound like it was, you know, going to have some tweaks, and basically, that was it. So I think that the Town Council is responsible for some of this action, that they need to have a conversation about what should be provided to the public and when. So that's basically what I have to say. And again, as a citizen of Town of Gray.
Thank you very much for your comments. Or is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight on something that's not on our agenda? Seeing none, I will close the agenda for public comments on non-agenda items. And we will move on to old business, our unfinished business. We only have one item tonight. I will take a motion for Order 2425-12, the addition of private solar energy system performance standards to the zoning ordinance, to remove this from the table. Moved and seconded Mike. All those in favor? Or I guess, is there any discussion? No. All those in favor? That's unanimous. So be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Gray, Maine, or actually, before we do this, we have a public hearing to do first. So I will open the public hearing on this ordinance. Is there anyone present tonight who would like to speak to the ordinance? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Joe Murray. I'm one of the trustees in the Water District. This is peripherally, I guess, on the ordinance. I wanted to publicly thank the Council for being willing to listen to what we had for concerns about this ordinance, and more importantly, be willing to act on that and make changes. And those changes resulted in extra work for the town staff, and quite a bit of delay in getting this ordinance in place. And you did it anyway, and we thank you for that, and the people who drink the water will thank you for that. Second item I have is more like a request. We would, we would really love the opportunity to input into these kinds of things at the draft and development stages early on. I think we could put in, I mean, like, like you go to the fire chief, or the, or the buildings and grounds people, or other staff, to get input. I think if you would come to the Water District also, I think we could give you some valuable input, and we'd be only too happy to do it. We just need to be asked, and that's really all it takes. That's, that's all I have, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments and the suggestion. Anything we can do to build bridges and open communications is a plus for sure. Are there any other additional comments? There's no one online, and I don't see any additional on here, so I'll close the public hearing and take a motion, Order 2425-12, the addition of private solar energy system performance standards to the zoning ordinance, be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Gray, Maine, and Council assembled to amend the Town of Gray zoning ordinance Chapter 402 and add private solar energy system performance standards 402.6.12, and associated amendments to prohibit solar panels in Wellhead 1, and allow PFAS-free certified solar panels in Wellhead 2 and BT 2. And to amend the commercial zoning, commercial solar energy system overlay district 402.8.10 to allow animal grazing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So Levi, second? Second, Mike. Is there any discussion? Krista?
Well, I just want to make a comment, really. I noted this in past meetings, but I'm, I do plan to vote against this, not because I'm not in favor of drinking water standards in town, which I do feel are very important. But I do, I do feel like we're approaching this in a way that is not as efficient. We're being overly stringent on residential solar in this district in particular. And I think there's a lot of other things we could address with an overlay, particularly around pesticide use, or other types of things that are probably more of a pollutant for drinking water than residential solar. So I just wanted to state that publicly.
So people would understand your vote? Sure, makes sense. Anyone else? I, I would just add, I think, I don't disagree with what you just said, but I think that I'll take the little win, and maybe there's an opportunity here to do some of the other things that you mentioned. We did point out that there are only eight possible residences that would, that are affected by this, none of which we know to date whether or not they're interested in solar that are in that zone that's prohibited. And I don't think this is the camel getting its nose in the tent in a, in a way to try and prohibit solar in any other zones. But I think in recognition of the Water District's concerns and some of the competing evidence that we've found online and from even from Maine CDC, I support this and plan to vote for it. Anybody else?
And? I would just note that, yeah, I think we do need to think about fertilizers and we, you know, in, across the town, but I don't think it makes sense to hold up this ordinance in order to get there. The resilience committee is looking, or will, you know, eventually, once we finish the work of this community action grant, we'll probably be looking at, you know, raising the discussion of a townwide fertilizer grant once we finish with a phosphorus one. So I, I think, you know, I, there's always more work to do than we have time to do it, and then this feels like the right step at the right time, and we'll just, you know, be a little incremental about this.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? We'll go to a vote. Ann?
Yes.
Krista?
No.
Levi?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. The ordinance passes 4-1. Moving on to new business, the only new business we have tonight is our amendment to the agenda to discuss filling a vacancy on the Council. It's a little out of the ordinary, but that doesn't mean it's not possible. I would like to make a motion that the Council will fill the vacancy by putting it on the June ballot.
I'd like to second that, yeah.
We can start a discussion then. And I, I'll start out by saying, I've been, this is my eighth year on the Council. Granted, I did sign up for nine. I will be honest in saying I hadn't planned to be here for more than six. If you think back a couple of years, we were in a bit of a pickle, I think, to say the least. And there were people leaving the Council and new people coming on, and I didn't feel particularly good about leaving the Council at that point in time with all of the heavy lifting that clearly needed to be done. I'm really happy to say that I'm sitting here, really pleased with the progress that we've made since that day back in September when we had our first town meeting in years as a result of the failed budget initiative that year. I will be 70 on the day before the election this June. I have plans to do some things on my own bucket list. One never knows how many days one gets in this world, and so I'm being considerably selfish, I will admit, by bailing on you all a year early. And I plan to actually go on a, I've always wanted to drive across country, so I plan to take about eight weeks, actually, to do, to do a trip starting later this summer. I will be back. I probably will be bored. I know you need a little help with Planning Board or ZBA, so I think probably I can keep myself out of trouble by helping there. But I also am not kidding myself that, you know, all of us are replaceable. I firmly believe that. And we had a lot of public interest when we chose Levi to fill Matt's place. And that really buoyed my own spirits. I hope that there's a kind of a similar interest here, and I'm kind of hoping that maybe because it's a one-year term, somebody might be willing to dip their toe in the water without having to, you know, to take a whole three-year term on. Those are all my rationalizations for justifying my actions, by the way. I readily admit that. But that's, that's kind of where I'm at, so. And I really do feel strongly that the people in town should, are the best ones to replace me. There are times when we get into a situation like when Matt moved out of town, and it is our responsibility to fill a vacancy like that. I had hoped to stay until June, but working with Michael, learned that you really can't, you can't act on my absence until I'm absent. So I'm going to be absent after tonight. That's all I have to say. So any other discussion? We'll go to a vote?
I just want to say thank you again and reiterate that I do, I appreciate you considering allowing for a proper election to occur, because I do think that that's the most equitable way to fill these seats.
Yeah, I think so too. Yeah, absolutely.
No, I, I feel exactly the same way. I'm bummed that you can't stay until June, because there's still some more things to do, but I, I respect the way that you're doing it, because I think it's the right way to do it.
Thank you. Yeah, I do feel, especially leaving the budget process, kind of in the middle is, is, I'm not thrilled about that, but, but it is what it is. So if that's the case, we'll go to a vote.
Oh, sure. If I may also echo the words of others, I appreciate the insight and support that you've provided me and my short time working together with you. And I, I know you'll be just a phone call away if I need any history or insight about other things. So I, I will always appreciate that, and hopefully, we can get you involved in another committee. And then procedurally, given that you are the chair, I think by default, the vice chair would become the chair until we hold the next election for a chair, which would occur after the June election, so.
I've already apologized to Krista for that.
If the Council, I think, wants to elect a vice chair, in the, another vice chair, in the meantime, they can. If not, we could keep, keep it as, as it is. And then we've assigned this an order number 2425-19, that we'll draft up the appropriate order language with the intent of the, the motion this evening, and have that documented appropriately for the future.
Any objection to amending the motion to include that number?
No.
No? Okay, we're all set then. Thank you. Thanks very much. All right, we'll go to a vote. Ann?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. That's unanimous. That's the only thing we had. We're back to public comments again on non-agenda items. If there's anything else anyone wants to say, because the end is going to come quickly here. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I just may take a moment during public comment to address the concern about the school budget.
Sure.
I sincerely apologize if I offended anyone in sharing the information. I was told that the, that preliminary school budget figures were available on the school website. And in the past, the Town Council has asked to have a big picture of the tax rate. And when I first released the budget, I had provided just a conservative estimate, which I also had provided during our budget public hearing in February. And with the updated figures that I obtained from the school department website, I just included those, and I thought it was clear that those were just information, budget figures that I had gathered from the website. So I apologize if I misled anyone with that information. And I know that the Town Council, I mean, the school board, has another budget hearing with revised figures, which is different than the numbers that I saw. But going forward, if, if the Council doesn't object, I'll just refrain from mentioning any school budget figures in the future and stick solely to the municipal budget. I know that there's a desire to see the big picture, but we'll see the big picture at the end.
At the end, yeah.
So I sincerely apologize if I offended anyone. That was never my intent. I was just simply sharing information that I was able to find on the website for preliminary budget figures.
Thank you, Michael. I think in your interest of being completely thorough, you just buried the good news. That was the only, that was my only comment. We have no referrals to discuss tonight. There's no new referrals. We have no executive session tonight, so at 7:57 PM, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I can make a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Mike. Second, Krista. Any objection to unanimous consent?
We do have the workshop.
We, we do have a workshop after.
Do you want to take a brief, brief reset?
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back at five minutes past, but we are adjourned. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. And let me change my agenda here. I'm looking at the wrong one. Just a second.
People said they couldn't hear me, but I guess I just need to.
Is there reason we broke it up this way? Was it because of the length?
Well, we weren't sure, yes, it was because of the length and because we weren't really sure what we would have for an agenda tonight, but fortunately, we didn't have really much, so.
Mike just really wanted to hang out with us all night long.
Well, it also allows the staff, most of the staff to go home.
Yeah, that was, most, we did say most, we recognize the fact that Britt is still here.
Most.
That's why we're starting two minutes early, because hopefully we can get you home at least two minutes early tonight. All right, with no further ado, welcome to the Gray Town Council Budget Workshop of March 18th, Take Two. For anyone who may be listening at home, you can tune in or actually call in using the information on the header of tonight's agenda, and this is the March 18th, 2025 meeting at 8:00 PM. I'll start with roll call. Ann?
Present.
Krista?
Present.
Levi?
Present.
Mike?
Here.
DM McGuire, I'm present, and I will turn it over to our town manager, Mike Foley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We left the finalization of talking about our capital improvement program off on our last agenda before we recessed for the town council meeting. We did hear from each respective department about some of the capital improvements that we have, so I do have a slide I just want to cover like a culmination of that. So we hope to accomplish this year's capital improvement program with a combination of borrowing, the raising of funds in the budget, and the use of reserve funds. For facilities and parks, we have about $207,000 worth of projects. Public works, we have $971,163. And then as part of, also in the CIP, I've included traffic safety improvements, which is an item we included last year's budget, to be able to, you have funds available to put radar speed signs, maybe speed tables or other things that, traffic safety improvements. We have, we had budgeted $15,000 last year, which those items are ready to go. We're waiting for spring to be able to put some poles and things in the ground. We're targeting some speed issues on Yarmouth Road, some stop sign issues on Mayall Road, and so we've been able to accomplish some of those things with the budget, and when those get put in, I'll, we'll share those updates of some of those traffic safety improvements and lighted signs and things of that nature. But we wanted to try to continue those efforts into the future when we hear from residents about safety concerns, speeding vehicles, things of that nature, so we included $25,000. And then we have a $8,154 contingency that we're incorporating into our bond, which brings a total capital improvement program of $1,211,317. And this is a funding worksheet that I included in the budget book as well, that includes, we'll talk about it more, debt service, but includes the refinancing of the Pennell Manual Arts Bond of $860,683, the Stillwater improvements of $150,000, the Public Works Fuel Tanks of a little over $321,000, and the Public Works Trucks of $650,000 for, with, along with the contingency, which is, we're proposing a total bond of $1,990,000, and we hope to obtain this bond through the Maine Municipal Bond Bank, which is a tool that's available through municipal governments here in Maine that provide favorable financing and a lot of cost savings associated with the sale of bonds and the efforts associated with that. So that's a very efficient process, one of which Debbie, our staff accountant, has worked with in other municipal roles, and so we should be able to accomplish that process fairly easy. The, as part of the raising of funds in the budget, we hope to raise approximately $47,000 to support the New Begin Lights, the Plimo Vent relocation that I talked about, and the $25,000 for traffic control efforts, for a total of $47,000 that you would see reflected in our budget summary. And then reserve funds, over the years, the council has set aside reserve funds for facilities and parks and things of that nature, and we're slowly reconciling those, and we'll have more data and we'll have more outline of designated funds available, but we feel we, we're going to have funds available to replace the hot water heaters that we talked about at the Public Works and Transfer Station, as well as the facilities and parks camera for the Facilities and Parks Building, which is the former Village Station, for a total of $35,000. So that has a total funding for, for all those items, including the, the bond refinancing of $2,072,000. And so that is the capital improvement program in a nutshell. If you want, I can, we could skip talking about revenues and just talk about debt service real quick, since they're kind of connected.
Sure, if you want.
If that's all right, so I'll skip revenues.
Is there any objection?
No, one. Well, I did have a question about one of these projects.
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
So the traffic control efforts, I, I know you talked in the past about how your strategy around capital reserve projects were to focus more on, like, really large items that have a long lifespan, and then you were moving other types, other types of like more short, short-term capital investments into program budgets, department budgets. So I'm just wondering why you feel the traffic control fits in as like a long, a long-term?
Well, it's not, we're not utilizing borrowing, which would be for longer-term things, and the capital fund, we're raising taxes to support these expenses. And so, yes, there, it's a capital investment, but they have, all those things have a lifespan. Anything that has a lifespan of longer than a year is capital investment. And so we would, these have an investment cycle of maybe 10 years or, or more with some of the improvements. Some of them are lighted signs with speed information, things of that nature. If we end up doing like, you know, traffic calming devices or things like actual treatments to the roadway that maybe we learn about through our trials with GP COG and things of that nature, those will literally have, you know, pretty much semi-permanent investments, so they have, they have an appropriate lifespan. So those are, those are, that's appropriate for us to raise capital funds for.
And am I correct, and these are, this is basically from the undesignated fund balance that this, the money from this column comes from?
No, this column, the fiscal year '26 capital fund is the raising of, of property taxes to support that.
That's the middle column.
That's the middle column.
But the last column, the reserve funds?
Those aren't coming from undesignated fund balance. Those are ones, in some of the recent budgets, the town has set aside money for facilities reserves.
Okay.
And those would be appropriate for those, for those items.
But will we have a facilities reserve budget in the future?
The council established one in prior years, and so there's funding that, when we update all the designated funds, we'll, we'll make sure that's outlined.
Yep.
But we, we're confident that we know that, for instance, I think at fiscal year '24, the council set aside $50,000 for facilities and parks reserve. Yes, we're still aggregating all those funds to make sure they're reflected in our designated funds, but we're confident we'll be able to cover those. So in the future, I hope to have a similar type of spreadsheet that shows the different funding mechanism, and maybe we'll add another column where we have grants or TIF funding or something like that, that we can use to, to fund certain projects for if, if they qualify.
Thanks for clearing that up. I just say, as a parting thing, we talked about this in finance a little bit today, but we know that the undesignated fund balance is bigger than, or we think that's what we'll know once we have the audits done, than what we're allowed, really, or what we, what we would want to have. But to Michael's point, we have these prior things that councils theoretically created or, or the citizens have voted on to pass that weren't accounted for appropriately.
Right.
So that money that looks like it's extra money may have, some of that may have been supposed to go into these other things that we thought we passed or thought we set aside.
The land acquisition fund as a big example.
Right, so I just want to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I just want to say that out loud for anybody who thinks that, you know, geez, you guys are sitting on a big pile of money and, and why. Once the audits are done, I think we'll understand, have a better understanding of that.
You're absolutely correct, but I think that the numbers set asides aren't huge because it, in reference to its reflection in our fund balance, because a lot of the bigger ones were set aside in fiscal year '24, which we haven't done that audit yet, so we'll make sure those are properly reflected. But some of the smaller ones are in fiscal year '23 and '22. We'll make sure those set aside, and it will have an impact on fund balance, because likely when those budgeted, budget, budgeted items or when those budgets were completed and those funds were never created, the money essentially rolled in. So we'll, we'll look to correct all these as part of our fiscal year '24 audit.
And I'm going to get really down into the weeds about just one last thing, which is some of the scholarships that we've had, where we didn't follow our agreement and actually spent the principal as opposed to just the interest, and so it's not a huge amount of money, but I feel like we're, at some point in time, when we get that far down the list of things to do, I think the council is going to need to honor that and replenish that fund with that money. But I think hopefully, I would hope at that time, when you do that, there might be a way to rule those up into some sort of a fund. If in the future someone wants to leave money to the town, there's, there's just one account to do that to, whether it's a scholarship or whatever. And that's my last dive into the weeds. Thank you, Michael.
I had one other question, I'm sorry. So one of the other warrant articles that we're voting on is to transfer $1 million from the unassigned general fund balance into the capital reserve fund, which makes sense, because I know we have an excess balance in there that we should utilize. But I guess I'm, I'm wondering why we then also need to vote on raising $47,000 separate from that?
So I have that covered in, under the revenues and transfers portion of the budget? Do you want to dig into that now?
Uh, no, maybe we can just touch on it when you get there, that's fine. Yeah.
One more question.
Sure.
As far as capital, because I'm sure this wasn't everything that was requested, and I'm not going to ask you for that list, because I'm sure it's probably pretty big, but in the future years, could we see kind of the item, capital items that were requested but didn't make it into your current budget?
Those were all the ones that were requested.
All of them?
Yes. And then years past, I've showed, at least last year, the one year I was here, I showed items that didn't make it into the budget, or if we reallocated to different places.
We do have an engineering report that we did years ago, basically a survey of all of our facilities that we've been chipping away at for, for literally years now, so.
Yeah, I'd heard in red committee at least, that he had, in prior years, maybe didn't request this year for the basketball hoop, so that was the one in my mind that stuck.
That was requested and approved.
That was requested and approved last year.
Yeah. They just haven't done the project.
Yeah.
Mike?
So I just want to make sure I'm on the, the right mindset here. So what we're saying in this first column is, this is the money that we want to borrow?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess, just the way I was raised, is why are we borrowing money when we could raise this in taxes now? I just have a problem with borrowing money against a truck when we could just pay for it now. We could find either some cut somewhere else, or I just don't want to keep borrowing money when I don't think we have to, especially for the trucks. You know, the, you know, I, I understand the bond balance, I get that, but the rest of them, I, I really don't want to borrow money. I have no problem with them, but I just don't think it makes a lot of sense to borrow for these, you know, for a million dollars.
I, I talk a little bit of the analysis as part of the debt service portion. Do we want to move to that now?
Sure, we can, unless you have.
No, I just wanted to express, I just, yeah, go on.
We can, yeah, why don't we move on then?
Okay, so under the debt service portion, I have a brief slide here. So again, they kind of blend together, so that's why I figured I'd cover them together.
Yep.
The proposed refinancing of the Pennell Manual Arts Bond, so that was a bond that the town undertook in fiscal year '24.
Yep.
It was to improve the septic system and renovate the manual arts facility.
Yes.
And so that was, for a total of $1 million, and the town proposed to borrow that for five years at a rate of about 5% interest. And so ultimately, it would be the recommendation in the future, if we were going to undertake a project like that, that has a lifespan of, in excess of 20 years, we would probably propose to finance an improvement like that for 20 years. So that way, it can be, the costs can be stretched out appropriately over its lifespan. And so the town chose at the time to do the five-year cycle at the high interest rate of 5% through our bank. It's not a standard bond where you can't pay, typically bonds, you can't pay them off early, because it's a contract with investors who are, are guaranteeing that rate of return. But this is through our bank, Andrew Scoggan Bank, and so they have the ability to be paid off early. And so we can find, we can pay that off early. That bond, we made the first payment of that bond in this fiscal year budget, because that was the payment that was due when I came on board as part of that. So as part of the, the proposed refinancing, we can save approximately $20,000 in interest expense from, even going from a five-year to a 10-year, because we're going from a 5% interest rate to an average interest rate of about 3.5% through that 10-year bond with the bond bank, rather than taking it and stretching it out for another 20 years or whatever. Why I settled with a 10-year is that helps us to stabilize the debt service account into the future. I'll just quickly add, before I transition to the next slide, that we did have the retirement of the excavator bond, which was a, a bond that the town had incurred that didn't happen and need to happen in this fiscal year. And then I'm also proposing to pay off the Village Gateway Property Bond as part of this year's fiscal year budget, which was another bond that the town took out for five years for a little bit, it's a little bit lower than 5% interest rate, but it's an interest rate, and we can get that, that paid off. But if you look at the debt service, I provided the document last week to everyone, and it's also in the electronic budget book, I added it in. If you look at the debt service number, this is principal and interest payments due. So right now, in fiscal year '25, we have $1 million, about $1,218,000 in debt, annual debt service payments. We're proposing in fiscal year '26, $1 million, approximately $1,093,000 in debt service payments. It, the, the debt, the debt payments steadily decline with what we've proposed. If we didn't propose the, the new thing, in fiscal year, fiscal year '29 and '30, the debt payment for the Pennell bond would have fallen off, and it would create a huge decline, a fast decline in the debt service in that budget. So that budget would not be stabilized, and so what this proposes to do is to stabilize that, to have it go down on a regular basis. You'll see in You'll see in in twenty thirty, we do have some of the bonds associated with the other uh bonds that the town did reduce. Um some of the payments associated, the two thousand eighteen bond occurred, um had some financing that was twenty years and some financing that was ten years that was blended together. And so that um that rolls off in twenty thirty, you see it goes from nine thirty-seven total to six sixty-one. And so it it helps to stabilize um bond financing for a few years. I don't disagree. If this was my personal budget and I had a multi-million dollars in the bank, I wouldn't be borrowing money. But all I'm trying to do is to create budget stability over time, over the long term in the municipal budget. At the end of the day, we could pay off all the things that we have with the money that we have in fund balance, and we could lower the tax rate a ton. But in all the strategies that are presenting itself, I'm trying to just stabilize things. The slow step down of the use of fund balance, which we'll talk about more in the revenue section, and the slower step down on debt service allows things to be financed more appropriately and also um and also articulate the 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 different the years that will be that will be saved in there and to generate some some small interest savings. To answer the question about the um capital uh capital reserve fund, which we'll we'll talk a little bit more. But I'm proposing that because I hope to in future years, when we need to replace the trucks that we need to talk about, that we'll have money as we reconcile all our accounts, we add in the money that we have, that we'll have money that available in our fund balance that in addition to stepping down the the um the use of fund balance in our budget, we'll be able to utilize the use of fund balance for one-time capital expenses that don't have an annual um expense associated with them. And you heard the county manager mention that with their use of fund balance as well. So if I can get us to a point where we're not using fund balance annually to balance our budget, we can then utilize fund balance annually to fund capital, the capital reserve. I propose to add that money to capital reserve this year. So one, a number of the projects that the council's already authorized, they may or may not come in over budget. And so we wanna make sure we have enough money in the reserve to cover some of those um funds. One of which is the fire truck that was authorized a number of years ago. The cost for that fire truck has has increased over what was originally authorized. And then and then uh and then we'll be able to, we'll be able to, once everything settles and we've got all our projects done, we'll have a capital reserve that hopefully next year, I'll have zero in the bar in the borrowing column, and we'll be utilizing either raising money in taxes and you or utilizing reserve accounts, existing reserve accounts to fund the capital projects that we'll have in future years. Obviously, if we have a big project, like we need to someday maybe build a new public safety building or and if we look at doing wastewater based on the wastewater study that we have, those things will require, you know, bond financing. But the goal will be to have smaller things, not include bond financing. But we are in a difficult position with the trucks because they were all funded uh in one fiscal year. We're gonna try to break those up, but have a replacement schedule going forward that that better manages the flow of that. So hopefully that explains a little bit of what my strategy is with to better stabilize accounts over time.
Which which spreading it out was the original goal of the twenty eighteen budget uh bond, but we won't, we won't go there.
Right, I mean, I I I don't wanna go into too much ancient history, but there the the uh you know, previous councils had prior to twenty eighteen had not only not put money into the CIP, but had also not addressed ongoing maintenance needs and and truck, you know, vehicle replacement needs. And so we had zero money saved and a whole bunch of stuff to do at once. It's kind of the situation we were in. And I I I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying that was the reality we were faced with. A lot of stuff was, you know, that was come due. The you know, the bills have been stuffed in drawers for a really long time, and um and we had to start paying some of them. So um I I um and I I think you had raised a question, Mike, about like, well, couldn't we just pay for this stuff out of pocket going forward and not borrow? And um I mean, my understanding, and this is not my area of expertise, but is that there is a debate and 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 disagreement. I mean, there are some people who say, well, like if I, you know, fork out a bunch of money for a new truck or or, you know, some new capital improvement in the next couple of years out of my tax money, and then I move out of town, then I'm not getting the benefit of that and, you know, kind of investment on my part, if you will. But if if um, you know, if we finance it for a twenty-year period or something like that, then and I move out of town in two years, then the people who buy my house um and who will benefit from that, uh you know, whatever it is, truck or new transfer station building or whatever the heck it might be, um you know, they're they're continuing to pay their share of that going forward. And I I mean, there's lots of different ways you can slice that, but my understanding is that is one of the, you know, that that there are different ways of looking at it. And um but and so uh and I think the other thing is that interest rates were really quite low for a while, even though we didn't get the best deals uh that we might have uh through the bond bank, but um and and we're in a different interest rate environment now.
I think it is important to, I I understand as far as eliminating the the big swings between this year, we have a lot of bond payment and next year we don't have any because we've we've paid a bond off. I certainly understand the idea of making that a more predictable amount that doesn't require a big increase in the third year because we didn't do anything in the previous year. Um I just do want to second though Anne's point. When we bought the last ladder truck, we took a significant amount of money from the capital budget, but we also borrowed against that. You know, that's a twenty-five-year investment. And so in order basically to get public support for the bond in our attempt to spread out the costs, um it's hard to understate the size of the hole that we were in back in twenty eighteen.
Right.
When we looked out to twenty thirty, we saw just spectacular numbers as far as what we would need to come up with for money in order to do things. And I will say that for decades, at least a couple, the town cut and kept taxes low and deferred and deferred and deferred and deferred expenses as far as maintenance was concerned on on capital expenses. And whether it's paving or, I mean, even what we're doing with out here in the village. So it, we we've come a long way, and I think, you know, with your help and with the uh refinancing, we're saving a little bit in interest, we're evening out those expenses. I really feel pretty good actually about where we are today, even though we weren't as successful in spreading out those equipment costs as much as we'd hoped when we created that bond back in twenty.
But we also realized significant cost savings by buying several vehicles at once.
We did, at the time. Yeah, and and it turned out, to be quite honest with you, as we got as twenty nineteen and twenty twenty happened, guess what? It turned out that we didn't need some of the equipment that was predicted we needed when we took the bond out. And so that was a whole nother kettle of fish. But um again, those are, you know, the the dark days, and and that's not where we are now. And so I think that that's good news for the community.
Yeah, when I look at bonds, I think of uh the village, uh the water district, that, you know, the big projects. I think, you know, where we we were just told a vehicle last ten years, you know, we're stretching it out to twelve. Why are we borrowing money uh for something at that in two years, we're gonna have to do it again, two years after that, we can do it again? Let's pay as we go. Um let's just be upfront with our people. You know, the the, you know, I understand exactly what you're saying, Anne, in in reference to paying for it, but those people that are living here now have the um, you know, the the great benefit of what our people paid before. It's like social security, right?
Right.
You know what I mean? So um I just, I don't wanna keep borrowing money. I think there's places in here where we could actually make it exactly even without borrowing it. I I don't think we need to put a half a million dollars away uh for the future to buy uh, you know, uh land. I think we can cut the uh the police uh piece out of it, and that would pay for those vehicles. Um and we wouldn't have to borrow more money. I just think that we're gonna wanna borrow money here in the near future for some of these projects that everybody i- is excited about, and we're gonna have to buy new vehicles in two years. And I just, I just don't like borrowing money, especially for these smaller items, you know? I mean, I think that's what our taxes are for, you know? And I, again, I don't wanna raise our taxes, but you know, there is other areas that we can cut before we take out money. It's just my opinion, but.
You got a chance to sell that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So echoing on the back of that, I would be completely the opposite in that and to not be afraid of borrowing because exactly, you want to keep the mill rate steady. You don't want it to be jumping all around like that. You wanna keep it steady. So as you're taking, you know, the layering bonds to basically match your useful life of that vehicle, well, yeah, now it's up for replacement in ten years, and what just fell off the mill rate is that exact bond. So then you replace it. Now the value's probably gone up slightly, but it's not a big hit to the mill rate at that point when you, when it comes up for replacement. The problem here is we have seven vehicles at once, so yeah, it's a big hit. But if the bonds are layered properly to match the useful life, it's just keeps the mill rate just like that. And you know, the the residents would appreciate that, I would imagine.
Yeah, that was the, I think they remember.
That's my goal, to have a stable mill rate.
All right, anything else before we move on?
You also get interest on not putting all that cash out at once, especially now that we're actually getting interest thanks to town management fully. So you have to at least think of that part of it too. And if our interest in the bond or lease is low, they're relatively offset without coming into any overcharge things.
Yeah, and I I think if, to Mike's point, when we make these transfers into the reserve account, it'll allow us to make these purchases without bonding in the future potentially. Um and then just in regards to the transfer into a land acquisition fund, uh the intent there is as we work on the village transformation project with the M D O T, there might be some strategic land acquisition that we might wanna make in the future to accommodate changes. Um and if we don't have the funds to to act on that, uh we wouldn't be able to act on it in a responsible way, so.
Anything else? Onward and upward. Okay.
Great, we'll uh back up uh quickly to revenues. Um I've got a a brief slide here. So administrative fees, public safety fees, excise taxes are now budgeted to better reflect actual revenue and forecasts for the future. Um municipal revenue sharing and excise taxes are kind of stabilizing. The general fund interest, as I mentioned, I was able to negotiate improved in our cap interest on cash on hand from two point five percent to three point five percent. So in the time I've been here, arrived, we were at point oh two percent. Um I got us to the two point five very quickly. We were able to show some revenue in fiscal year twenty four associated with that. And then going forward, uh in fiscal year twenty five, uh we we started the year at two point five. I was able to get us to three point five during the fiscal year, and then we're planning to be at three point five for the next fiscal year. So that's why you'll see increases in there. Um general assistance, um the revenue associated with that, um it's part of our intergovernmental revenue is it's based on budgeted expenses. So we talked about the services that we provide, those are reflected with a reimbursement of seventy percent. Um we talked about that at length, and we talked about that budget. Uh the recreation revenue, um we have uh more refined, better estimates on revenue as we transition from the enterprise fund that we used to use to actual uh uh regular general fund. And then uh as far as transfers are concerned, I propose to continue the use, uh the step-down use of fund balance in the budget. Um and uh the one million uh dollars of proposed transfer to the capital reserve, as I kind of described earlier, and the five thousand um dollars into um five hundred thousand dollars into the land acquisition fund. We currently have approximately six hundred and forty-two thousand set aside based on the allocations that uh people are putting in the past. So between what Council Chapel mentioned about acquisition for the village transformation project, there's also open space committee talking about acquisitions. There's um opportunities to acquire land connected with Libby Hill. Um I'm just hoping to establish that so we have a resource. When these opportunities come forth, we can potentially look to secure those opportunities in the next year or two. Um and so that's why I I propose to do that. And then again, the TIF revenue um supports the economic development department. And you wanna look at the revenues in kind of uh aggregate detail, I'd call your attention to the budget summary that I prepared. They're in more, they're in more minutia detail as part of in ClearGov, but you can see the increases that I talked about in administrative fees and the stabilization of excise tax and other areas that are smaller impacts um to the budget. For fiscal year twenty five, for uh interest, we budgeted three hundred thousand. We're proposing to hit four hundred and forty thousand, which is a very, very conservative estimate, so I think we'll surpass that when that does happen. Um and then some of the other revenues I I outlined and highlighted um as part of those. Um and then I'll just quickly show before I, we had talked about that we had talked about fund balance at the beginning, just kind of the big picture. So we, as part, as per the town charter, we're required to have three twelfths or twenty-five percent um of our tax commitment set aside for um to to operate the town and things of that nature. And so we should have, based on our twenty, our tax commitment in fiscal year twenty five of of a little over twenty-one million dollars, we should have roughly five million, five point three million set aside. We can, we should have, that should be the max. The low should be about three point five million. Based on our draft fiscal year twenty-three audit, which we should hopefully have in the coming weeks, a month or so, um we are showing a a unassigned fund balance of seven million nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars, uh nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is thirty-seven percent of the required amount. So we have um twelve percent more than we should. Showing the fiscal year twenty-four chan transfers that we're forecasting, we had, there was an estimate of um, there was an estimate of transfers out of fund balance, but based on the budget performance, which had some of those revenues that were accurately reflected, and the actual transfers, we're actually gonna make a contribution to fund balance in fiscal year twenty four. There's an unaudited accounts that we're estimating um of about one point six million. Um and then with the fiscal year twenty-five transfer, which is the current budget we in, we propose to transfer one million to to offset the tax rate. Um we're hoping that we don't hit that number, so it'll be less than that. Um and then as part of fif- fiscal year twenty-six, I'm proposing a total of two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of transfers. Um only seven hundred and fifty thousand of it is used to balance the budget, which is we stepped down from a million, which will put us still at twenty-eight point eight percent of what we need. And in the budget book under um, under uh the revenue summary section, I did forecast the step down of the use of fund balance from fiscal year twenty-six of seven hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty-seven and to two hundred and fifty thousand in fiscal year twenty-eight, which will still leave us with a fund balance of twenty-six point two percent, which is still one percent over where it should be. Um so there is some room to move and to do some other things in there. Um so one of the things I did wanna mention, if the, if it's the council's goal, and I'm gonna talk about some budget changes as as items to revisit at the end. If it's the council's goal to lower taxes even further than the budget we proposed and some of the adjustments that I'll be, we could increase the use of fund balance up back up to one million dollars, and that will lower taxes even more. But again, to Council Robinson's point and to others, we're trying to stabilize the tax rate. So last year was really like a tax rate correction based on some of the revenue figures and things of that nature. We're continuing to tweak some budget lines in this fiscal year and and make sure we're more right on. And so this year will be the beginning of stabilization. Last year, we lowered the mill rate um on a budget-to-budget situation without revaluation, we lowered the mill rate by twenty cents. Um it's a figure that is unheard of in the municipal world. Um so that's a, you know, fortunate opportunity from what we had in the in the finances to be able to do that. Um and then that helps offset whatever increase we have in either county taxes or in school taxes. So that helped offset to lower that increase. Ultimately, there was an increase in the mill rate based on the combined budgets. Um and so we could lower the tax rate even more if the council wanted to transfer even more money um to offset to to balance the budget. So that's uh revenues and transfers um in a nutshell. Be happy to take any questions about that before we move on to some of the final budget adjustments that was talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I just wanna go back to the land acquisition fund since I'm the open space liaison. And I I, one of the points of, one of the benefits to having a pool of funds like that available to the town is that often is that, um, often, you know, most often, in fact, we're not, um, the sole funding behind some land acquisition. There's some sort of partnership with either, uh, you know, a private property owner or, you know, or some benefactor who's willing to help out with a, and interested in helping to preserve land in Gray. That's, that kind of happened with Thayer Brook initially. Um, you know, the Land Remains Future Fund is another source of funding their various foundations. Oh, well, yeah, I mean, we'll see.
Not until we get back in their good books.
Oh, well, uh.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sure of that.
The land, Land Remains Future is state money. It's not federal money.
I know it's not, but it's still tied to, yeah, because it was inland fisheries that awarded us the money for the tennis courts.
Well, yeah, so I mean, but there are, there are still other foundations that will help with small bits and pieces of land acquisition.
Hopefully that what we're doing up the road will take care of that.
Yeah, so I, I just want to point out that, that, um, that money can get leverage or will help us leverage a lot of other dollars. And, and so we're not, uh, looking for gray taxpayers to shoulder the whole burden of land acquisition. I guess that's my point.
And I would just say, cause not everyone in town is thrilled with the idea of there being accounts for open space and things like that. It will ultimately be up to the voters to make those decisions. So it's not, the, the council doesn't have the ability to spend that money without permission from the voters.
I think that we do actually. I, I think that, that we got a different, different guidance on that. But it was the voters who approved those funds to begin with, right? That was a separate warrant article. Um, you know, there were several, several years in a row, I think. So the voters have already weighed in on the use of those funds for that purpose.
The caveat always was though, and we sold the original fund, it was based on the fact that that money wouldn't be able to be spent without voter approval. So I don't know where that will end up, but.
I'm pretty sure it was a, we could go back to the details, but I thought it was like a public hearing. We had to hold a public hearing.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Anyways, we'll move on. We won't get stuck there.
Yeah.
If I, if I may, just because I think that's an important point. Um, so from what I researched the previous years, that money was set aside for that and, and this year. So the question that we proposed is that shall the town vote to authorize the transfer in the amount, of the amount in excess of three twelfths of the town's unassigned general fund balance as of June 30th, 2025, not to exceed 500,000 to the land acquisition reserve fund established by the town in fiscal year ending 2020, provided that in no event shall the unassigned fund balance be reduced as a result of such transfer to a level less than two twelfths of the town's net assessment for commitment and to appropriate up to said amounts as described for costs associated with infrastructure improvements and acquisition of land necessary to achieve the open space and Gray Village development goals identified in the town's comprehensive plan and the Gray Village master plan as the town council deems to be in the town's best interest, provided that the town council shall hold a public hearing prior to the expenditure of any funds from the land acquisition fund.
And that gets you permission.
They're authorized and appropriated from the voters to then allow you to be able to, to spend them. So if we, if say five months from now, a piece of land comes up, I can bring it to you to, for approval and you can hold a public hearing and approve it.
Yeah, and I mean, the idea is to be able to be reactionary because in the past, when these opportunities have arisen, we often, um, had to wait until, you know, a June ballot referendum.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that happened across the street.
Right, and then we either almost lost the opportunity to purchase key properties or, or we did lose them. So.
Yeah.
I know. It'd be interesting to see if we sell that one.
Yeah.
And so ultimately that question and the capital reserve question, those will be separate questions on the ballot.
Yep, right.
So folks can accept or reject those and those won't have any, um, effect on, on the budget. But one of the transfer of 750,000 to offset the budget is also a separate question. And last year was a million and the voters approved it.
Yeah.
At the same rate as the budget as a whole.
As I hope they approve these ones. Anyone else before we go on? All right.
And then lastly, um, the items to revisit, I have a, a brief slide here. I know there was some desire amongst councils to potentially have a separate warrant question for the enhanced or improved law enforcement services. So I put that as something that we could potentially have a discussion on today. Um, and then, um, so I've, I've made some final adjustments to the budget based on some of the tweaks that I've talked about um, in, in the, the last, in during this meeting.
Excuse me for interrupting. Do you, will you want, uh, guidance from the council on each of these as, or?
Yes, because we'll have to bring forth the draft warrants, um, to the council to, to, as part of the public hearing on April 4th.
So do you want us to straw poll them as we go through them? And so you get that guidance or?
Let me just introduce them all and then if there's any objections or anything, then we can talk about it. So, um, the final adjustments that I found in the budget is a reduction in the total budget of 96,524. Thirty one thousand, a reduction of 31,115, uh, from the administration portion of the budget, um, which is revised taxes and benefits from some of the personnel changes that I'll explain in a second. Uh, library and recreation, we have a, a reduction of about, uh, $4,515. That's due to some staffing tweaks that we've had and also includes the increase for books that the council had. So there's still a slight decrease in library and recreation. And then, uh, public safety, we have a decrease in 33,954, which is revised wages, um, and benefits and things for the vacant positions that we have. Um, and then in public works, we have a reduction of 27,040, which is adjustments for the recycling and solid waste facilities and parks positions that I told you about. There were some transfers associated with, um, staffing. And so those are, are reflected in the total of 96,524. So they hit a bunch of different budget lines, like I said, under the administration that hits Medicare, social security, um, benefits, retirements, all those things. So they, they all hit a few different budget lines. So we'll make those adjustments in the final, uh, in the final budget as recommended, um, by the council. Um, so we're hoping that the council will entertain those. And then again, I don't know if the council wants to have a, a separate warrant question for the law enforcement enhancements. I drafted, um, one that I have available to talk about. Um, I did want to just mention, I'll skip real quick, uh, my next slide. So based on those adjustments that I propose, um, it brings a total municipal general fund budget of 13,700,218, which is an increase of 297,207, or just 2.2%. Um, the TIF is, is a forecast and estimate. Um, the schools, I completely removed any reference to any, um, figure associated based on, um, the comments I made in the last town council meeting. So there's no percentage change there. Um, we have the figures from the county. So without any changes to the school, um, this is showing a, a proposed budget of, uh, 28,596,177, which is an increase of 385,336, or 1.37%. Um, the revenues that we kind of talked about, those have stayed kind of static. I don't have any proposed, um, tweaks for those because we've, we've done a lot of work to refine those. So given the estimated tax needs after the revenues, um, the total estimated tax needs for the municipal budget is, um, 6,310,031, which is a reduction from the previous fiscal year of 131,380, which is a 2.04% reduction. Um, TIF and again, no estimate for school. So this, without any of those other estimates, this shows a total tax needs for the budget. Um, I just will point out in the, in the recent school budget that I saw that, that number for gray share is substantially higher than what's there, but we'll let them give us a final number to, to calculate those. Um, it's, uh, 21,205,990, or a reduction in, uh, 43,250, a little, uh, a little less, or reduction in point two percent. Um, and so with this, the effect this has on the tax rate, um, the municipal tax rate would go from $2.94 per $1,000 of value to $2.86, which is a reduction of eight cents, which is double the original budget that I had proposed, a double the reduction. So it's a reduction of 1.4%. And again, no impacts for the school. Um, with the, with the, with the municipal budget and the county, um, we'd be proposing a, a tax rate reduction of about 10 cents, um, which to the average homeowner in Gray, which has a home valued at 476,000, it'd be a $47 and 47 cent reduction, which in their property tax bill. Again, that's without any numbers associated with the school. So that could substantially change. So that's, um, the budget in a nutshell with those, um, forecasted changes that I have. And so if, I think if the council wants to include those forecasted changes in the budget as a whole, um, a simple motion today to refer the, the, the budget, collective budget to the, uh, to public hearing at our next town council meeting would probably be sufficient. Um, or if there's no, if you want to take it unanimous consent or whatever, um, to refer the budget for, for final action. And then if you want to talk about the law enforcement, separate question, I have that info. And that's all I had to hopefully conclude our budget review process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, thank you. That, um, it's a record for sure. I mean, I don't know how many hundreds of hours we spent on budgets in years past, but I think we're getting to the point where we're, we're closer. Um, before we go any further, we do have to, we do have to answer the question about the sheriff's department. But I, but I was just going to say, are.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, um, I don't think we needed to go to a warrant. I, I, I think, um, you know, I think we should decide now whether we want it or not. I mean, it's up to us and, you know, um, you know, it's, you know, I, I, I just feel like if we do that, then every single thing should go to a warrant. You know, I mean, that's what we're here for. You know, we, we know our constituents and, you know, um, either, you know, we think they want it or we don't think they want it, you know? So and I made a bunch more calls just because I wanted to make sure it just wasn't my opinion. So, um, you know, that, that's how I feel.
Yeah, I, I would agree that I, you know, we're elected to make these difficult decisions and I, this is kind of one of them. So I think we could address it here as a group.
Yeah.
Um, so I, um, reached out to people I know in the community, um, about this question of, of the deputy. And I, I didn't have time today to, to really tally, you know, kind of what the responses were. My impression is it was kind of 50/50. Um, you know, while it's not accurate or true across the board, uh, if, if people who live in higher traffic areas like the village, um, or, you know, say dry mills or, or areas of 115 or, or Route 100, um, you know, are, are on board with having an, of another deputy. I mean, they, they, they are experiencing the traffic impacts. They see it firsthand. Um, and they, um, you know, they think it's important. I mean, there, I think there's a group of people who live on quieter streets and just don't see the value. Um, there are another people, a group of people who are pro and con in terms of, you know, whether or not deputies are the appropriate, um, sort of vehicle, if you will, for addressing mental health concerns. Um, and so I, 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 I was really hoping that I'd get a, you know, sort of a landslide. Yeah, one way or the other, and I didn't get it. And I, so I actually do think that, I like the idea of the warrant. I, I think that, um, it gives more people than I was able to reach with my network or, you know, people we know as neighbors to weigh in on it. And, um, and so I, I, I would argue in favor of a, a separate warrant article.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I feel the same. I think especially if something that's, you know, seemingly is close split, um, as that, um, I think it really, at that point, there should be more voices heard rather than just, you know, the five of us kind of picking what we, what we feel is right and having it buried inside, you know, one, one number where you can't really, you have to, you know, defeat the whole thing really at that point. So I think because it's really seemingly that split, splitting it out makes sense.
Okay. Um, my own thoughts are I get both positions. I've been on councils that have done it one way and councils that have done it the other, depending on the majority. Personally, um, there were 667 people who voted for me when I got on the council two years ago. And unfortunately, there were 742 that left it blank, but we won't go into that. Is that know how, know how I think, know how I vote, know how I can represent them. And I tend to be in favor of the idea that we should just do the work and, and let people then decide on the whole thing. Um, I have, I think it is pretty evenly split. But I don't think, to be quite honest with you, that, I mean, we, we've added to our deputy force. Granted, it's small, but we've added in the past. And I think it has a pretty negligible impact on that one thing that people are really mostly concerned about, which is traffic. I wish it did have more of an effect, but between the other issue, I think the mental health issue is the, is the, the hottest fire to fight as far as the ineffective use of the deputies that we have now. Um, you know, they, they politely refused to, to identify exactly how many people we're talking about. But those 142 calls are being generated by less than a dozen people that happen every month. And for the cost of, because it's not just the deputy, it's the, it's the all the, it's the 130,000 dollars worth of equipment that you have to go with when you, when you get a deputy. I just think that I would encourage the council to look at it, at a more effective way. Now there, you know, whether it's partnering with, uh, an organization that provides mental health support or some other solution, but I think that would be a much more effective use of the money than, um, to add another deputy at this time myself. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm leaning in favor of the council making that decision. Yeah.
Um, through work that I used to do, um, I know that, I think it was the, um, John T. Gorman Foundation took a, a good, a look at this on maybe, you know, this is maybe like eight years ago or 10 years ago. Uh, because I knew the executive director there and he knew that I had done that, um, crisis intervention work in college. I guess we talked about it and, and, uh, so, and he reached out to me and, and I, I, they did a whole study about it. And I, I think they, you know, I'm not really sure how they, what the conclusions were, but my impression is that to the extent there are mental health workers available, they tend to be concentrated in Portland or, or in the more, uh, you know, populated areas, which makes sense. It's, 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 you know, it's expensive to, uh, because then you still have to deal with a vehicle for a mental health worker. I, I do agree though that, um, you know, I, I, I'm, well, let me back up. I think I've said this in, in previous council meetings, um, again, through work that I have done in the past. I, I, um, you know, the, the sheriffs have been very clear that when they have, you know, very few staff in, in a, in a particular town or an area, then, um, just to free up somebody to go to the mental health training that the National Alliance of mentally ill, uh, put on, uh, is, you know, they, it, it, there's an additional cost burden, especially for small towns that can't afford it. And, and, and it's, it's hard to find replacements, you know, for them while they're off at training. So it's, um, I don't know to what extent the Commonwealth County Sheriff's, you know, can really commit to making sure that their deputies get that mental health training. But, uh, and I did have somebody say to me that the deputies came out and dealt with, uh, um, or, you know, they were involved with a situation where a, a deputy came to, to the person's house who was in crisis and dealt with it beautifully as far as she was concerned and she was really impressed with it. So, you know.
It's just.
End of one.
Yeah, it's just that is, you know, it's, it's that time factor. So anyways, I think it feels like we're.
The, the, the last thing I want to say is this, is that, you know, I think that if we decide not to add the, the, uh, half a deputy this year, doesn't mean we can't do it next year. Um, I just don't think it's the right time to do it. I would prefer to see us, like Mike's done with all the other towns, is work with these other towns. If we want to do some shared services and, and have the sheriff within, you know, a few of these areas, I'd prefer to do that. I feel like we're always taking on the burden. Um, and that's not our responsibility all the time. Um, you know, um, I, you know, I just think it's one thing we can cut from this budget that we really don't have to decide today.
Okay. Or, you know, we do know our deputies get called for mutual aid and do other things too. So it feels like we're not really adding any new information. I would encourage we go to a straw poll. Those in favor of separating this out for the budget? That's two. So it will stay part of the budget the way it is.
What about, uh, you know, removing it from the budget altogether?
Yeah.
Can we do that straw poll?
We can do that straw poll too.
The, the amount to remove would be 110,101.
Okay. And do you, any discussion on removing that money from the budget?
Can I, what, can I just ask a clarification?
Sure, say.
Um, I, I'm just surprised at that figure because I thought of the value of the salary plus the cost of the vehicle would be more than that. Is it because it's a half year position?
Yeah, so, um, and essentially the, the way I described the, the question was to raise and appropriate an additional 110,101,000 over the current year.
Right.
Um, to increase the dedicated patrol because we currently have dedicated law enforcement patrol Wednesday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM. This proposal would add dedicated patrol Sunday through Wednesday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, beginning January 4th. patrol Sunday through Wednesday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, beginning January 1st, 2026. And so, that's, it's only a half-year position and the equipment associated with that. Otherwise, we did have money in the budget in the previous year for a vehicle that we hope to use to establish a reserve to replace the current sheriff's deputies' vehicles that we have that are going to come due soon. So, we can start that reserve process. If we want to cut more from the vehicle reserve that we had hoped to establish, if we didn't fill a new deputy, then we could, we could essentially cut more. But this was the additional, only the additional cost for the new deputy was the 110, 101.
So, it's not, I mean, just to piggyback on that. So, I, in my mind, I was thinking, you know, we would have to buy the whole vehicle for the first six months and then it would just be half the person's salary. Like the vehicle and all the other equipment.
Yeah, because we already had some money budgeted for the car last year, we still kept that in the budget.
Oh, okay.
To either use for the new position or to use to, to fund our reserve to future, to replace future vehicles that we have coming up down, down the road. And so, the total, we would, we would be able to fund the, all the vehicle, the equipment and a half-year sheriff's salary with what we have budgeted. If we don't want to have the, the half-year sheriff's salary and the new equipment that's needed for a new deputy, it would be, the cost to cut would be 110, about 110,000.
For half a year?
Just for half.
Yeah, so next year it'd be double that.
Well, so what, that was my question. What are the annual maintenance costs?
No, so next year...
We wouldn't have to buy the equipment and the...
Yeah, next year it would be, so the, the only portion that would double is the salary portion.
Yeah.
Which is about 63,000 in this fiscal year. We don't, I don't know what it's going to be in next fiscal year. They, they have, in the sheriff's budget, we have an increase in the current contract that we already have based on wages and, and all those types of things. So, the, the 110 doesn't double. It's just the, it's just the 60, approximately 60, the salary. That's approximately 63,000. That would double.
But then we lose that money that we're setting aside for the other vehicle because we use it on this one. And we still have to come up with money for the next vehicle.
And then next year, we could set aside money for the, to, to establish our reserve for the future vehicles.
It would just keep adding, yeah.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't add on because next year we wouldn't, unless I, unless we propose to add another deputy next year, we wouldn't need the full money for vehicle and equipment next year. And I, I'm not going to propose to add something. Let the new thing get settled in and get fully funded. It would be my recommendation to do it that way. Again, it's up to you and up to the voters. But ultimately, that's how much we could cut in this budget if you, if you wanted to maintain setting aside money for future vehicles of our current deputies.
Given the cost of the vehicles and given the fact we have a, a, a group of deputies now, which we don't, none of us are proposing to shrink, I think it makes sense to have the reserve for the vehicles because the price has just gone through the roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, last year we had to increase the budget by $72,000 just to fund the, the new vehicle.
Yeah. So, I think having the, keeping the, you know, whatever people decide it, whenever the majority decides for the, the, the salary benefits portion, I think, I think it's wise to keep the vehicle reserve portion of the budget.
That's my thinking as well. I mean, I didn't mention when I was sort of rehashing the, or, or telling you about the responses that I got. But I, I had a number of people say, I, you know, that the, the property tax increases, especially from those people who saw a big increase from the rebound.
Those of us that got a big increase in our evaluation.
Yeah, they, they were kind of like, no, I just can't afford it. I'm living on a fixed income. So, but there were other people who were like, I'd cheerfully pay for another deputy. So, I mean...
Yeah. I just, on the value of adding a deputy, I mean, I know that we're focusing a lot on the increase in mental health calls that they mentioned that they're addressing. But I don't want to, I also don't want to underestimate the value of, of traffic control, particularly in the Village and around our school districts. I mean, we all know when we're driving around the towns that have regular deputies out patrolling for traffic. Like you go through Yarmouth and you slow down even if you don't see a deputy.
But that's not a deputy.
Well, if they're, I know they have their own police force, but I'm just...
Same with Cumberland.
Sure. My, my point is that you, you know if a police officer is regularly in a, in a place and it does affect how you drive. And, and I know that we've had a lot of complaints with high traffic volumes and speeds in the Village. And also, you know, response rates with crashes and if, especially if we're looking to increase pedestrian traffic and the usability of our streets for other modes of transit, transit. You know, I think it would be a responsible thing to do, especially as the town also has dramatically increased in size in the last five to 10 years, to have a, a, a police presence here that reflects that population increase and also the needs of our community going forward.
Okay, good. Anyone else want to chime in?
Yeah, so, I guess my thing with it is currently, you know, we're looking at a decreasing budget. And at that point, you know, there's clearly room and it's recommended by the town manager to do it. And obviously, there's seemingly from both, from both sides, some disagreeing on whether it should be done. But I think there's an opportunity to, to, since our budget is that way, if we're going to do it, to add that extra 60,000 in and just do it all in one go rather than deferring that 60,000 increase next year.
I don't think they'd be able to hire a deputy effective July 1st.
I'm not saying that necessarily. I'd just put it in the reserve and you could, you know, pull it out from that at that point. So, it just makes more sense to me at that point to do it when you have the ability to do it.
You know, it's, it's a philosophical question. And to the extent that, you know, it, it appears that the money is available, but you can also say that the money doesn't have to be spent. And so, you know, that has a positive impact for people too. So, it feels like the, it feels like no one is suggesting, if I'm understanding correctly, I'm not hearing anyone say that we should cut the reserve out.
No.
But there is the question on the table about the, the salary portion and not having that halftime position. Anything else, anybody wants to add before we straw poll it? This one I'm going to do the other way around. Those in favor of taking the money out of the budget? All right. You, are you, are you having an on or are you voting?
I'm just like still ambivalent. I, I, I don't know. I really, I really think that this is something that the voters should vote on. But, but...
That's not happening.
Yeah, I know. I understand that's not happening. So, I, I mean, I, I started out by saying I, I would be willing to add one more deputy. And I, I still hold by that position. So, I guess I'll go along with that.
Yep, then the money stays in the budget.
I think three is probably in my eyes the right amount too, just based on that added coverage.
Well, the majority of you have ruled. So, that's the direction to the town manager.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that...
I have a question.
Yes.
As you noted earlier, these are not final, final numbers because we don't have accurate figures from the school district yet. Do we have any, any opportunity after, between now and when we vote on the warrants firmly to make amendments if, if there is a dramatic increase in tax need from the school district?
So, you're talking about making reductions in the municipal budget due to the tax increases in the schools?
Yeah. I mean, I don't, ideally wouldn't like to do that. I don't want to, you know, we have our budget, they have their budget. But ultimately, it is the tax bill that people get. So, just curious.
So, for April 1st, I'll prepare draft warrants that you'll have a public hearing on. I think if you would like to make, and at that same night, we'll also hear from the superintendent with any numbers that they have. I, I can maybe try to calculate, when, as she presents it, calculate it into the, into the, my tax rate worksheet that I handed out this evening with the revised numbers for everyone and let you know what the tax rate impact is based on their budget. I think they have a number of budget review meetings scheduled. So, I don't know if they'll still make tweaks. If there's any tweaks you wanted to propose by the first, then I could make those adjustments reflected in the vote of the budget warrants, which would take place on the April 15th meeting. Or you could make on the fly amendments on April 15th before you take a final vote on the, on the warrants.
Okay. So, we do technically have between the first and the 15th to make...
Yeah, between now and the 15th, you could, you know, say we're going to cut 100,000 from law enforcement or we're going to cut in other areas. I just would ask that if there's going to be cuts that you would like to make that are significant, either ask us for an amount that you want to cut.
Right.
And we can recommend where we think that is.
Yep.
And I'll tell you, as the budget as a whole, it's a pretty status quo budget. If we, if it's not something that the council wants, or wants to reduce significantly, obviously, I think a recommendation will be to reduce in law enforcement, given that it's not something we have. And then reduce in, in any of the other new positions we, we had, which really the only one that's truly new is the, to support the transfer station. So, I had proposed eliminating those. And then after that, it really is a status quo budget.
Yeah.
I would recommend reducing capital or reducing paving in order to achieve any significant reductions or increasing the use of fund balance.
Right.
Under, just, I mean, I, just from a, a control standpoint, because everybody wants to jump in, but Krista still has the floor.
Yeah, I just want to say I am supportive of this budget that you've presented along with your staff and the department heads. I think, like you said, it is fairly status quo. It's responsible. It's responsive. I just, I just want to be aware of people's stresses on their budgets because I know that that's a real concern. So, I, ideally, I wouldn't end up cutting from this budget, which has been responsibly done. But if we, if we end up seeing, you know, double-digit increases from the school, I, I might want to just kind of reflect on how we, we could impact people's tax bills with that. So...
Mike?
I just want to make sure here that you would decrease paving. Is that what you said?
Yeah, I just went through the priorities of the things that we would, that we would eliminate based on this, based on the fact that everything else is a status quo.
Well, no, that's not true. I, I just want to make this one comment and I'll leave it. The raises for the heads of the departments were about $10,000 per head. And that is significant over the average raise in the U.S. this year. And to say you would cut paving, which is something that we need, overlooking at other things first is really disappointing.
Okay.
Well, what's also disappointing is that if we don't have a competitive pay for our workforce, we don't have good people and we'll be in negative situations. And I'm trying to have a workforce that we can retain and hold on to and recognize them for the years of service and have their pay be somewhat close to the market area. So, I wouldn't necessarily propose to pay people less simply because the, the, the council wants to cut the budget by amount. I would cut things that we can live without. And we can't live without the high-quality professionals that I've budgeted for.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
So, I just wanted to say one last thing about the, the sheriff situation because I think we're, we're in a situation where basically neither, neither camp is truly happy in what they, you know, kind of want, where Ann and I would rather see it be, you know, a single piece so that, you know, the, the many voices can have, you know, their say on it more so than just five. So, really, all that would take is one more flipping to, you know, vote to add on. And I think that solves really at the end of the day, it makes everyone happier. So, I don't know why we're not just doing that in that respect. But I don't want to, you know, drag something back from the dead. But it seems like neither is...
We're making sausage. And, and I, I agree. But I, but I, yes, welcome to the council. Sometimes you're on the short end. And I just, well, just one thing I want to add. Under no circumstances, there's not a snowballs chance in hell that I would cut the municipal budget to do anything to lessen the impact on taxes to the school. For decades, the town has been patented for the tax increases that have been generated by the school system. Before anybody who might be on the school board gets upset about what I just said, I'm a total supporter of the schools. But the town has valid interests and needs. And we cannot be the, the shock absorber that manages the impact of the schools. The school system, we're separate entities. The school has to sell their piece of the pie and we have to sell ours. And it would, I think, momentarily, I'm going to lose my ability to have any input. But I would, I would just recommend you don't even entertain that thought, to be honest with you. That's how strongly I feel. And given our history, I think it's, what we're proposing is totally defendable in, in every way, shape or form.
I mean, we've held, we've held the line on it before in the years past. But I, you know, I also don't want to go through another failed budget and...
No, that is the, that is the ramification of the way this, the, the referendum process works. You're right. But I, I, I would, I would rather have a failed budget than to change our budget, myself personally. So, that bit of bluster before we...
Well, I'll just note that, yeah, so if we, but we'll lose your ser, your vote, I guess. So, it'll be the four of us voting on any changes going forward, right?
It will be. And a tie is a no vote. So...
Right, right. Okay. So, yeah, it's, it's keeping the status quo essentially, right, of what's been proposed. Yeah.
So, I think have, we're leaving, the vote was that we're leaving that in, right?
Yeah, I'm still...
Yeah. I mean, I, I see the value in what Levi and Ann have said about this is sort of a 50/50 split. And I, I don't, I don't want to get into the habit of if we have a difficult decision to make, we, we always ask it to be a separate referendum question because that just gets into the weeds too much. And if people haven't been, I'm not saying voters are uninformed, but, you know, people are busy. It's hard to read through all the content. If you, if you, if you haven't really gotten into the weeds of the budget and you show up and you have these separate questions and you don't understand what that impact is on the rest of the budget, I don't, I don't know. People can just be reflexive on their emotions in the voting booth. So, I, you know, I don't want to get into the habit of that being the case. But...
I hear you.
Although we, we haven't. I mean, we, the land acquisition fund is something we voted separately on. I think buying the Gateway parcel was another one. But those, I don't know. Yeah. I, I think, would it be possible for you to read the, the draft?
Yeah. Hold on, let me, I just said...
Well, we don't have anything on the table to vote on right now.
Okay, sorry.
I mean, we've made our decisions unless someone who voted no again something...
I, I voted no. I'd like to revisit it.
Yeah, me too.
Make a motion. I don't know if we're voting formally in this workshop.
We're not. But, well, we're giving Michael direction. So, if we stick to, if we adhere to the rules...
I'll be the wishy-washy one and say let's...
The road of persons.
I'm right behind you.
So, I, as part of the, the warrants, I would propose a new Article 5, which would fall just under the authorization of the town council salaries, which is a, a separate question that's required. So, if this were something that we'd authorize, we'd subtract the 110, 101,000 from the total number of public safety in the budget as a whole warrant. And we would propose this question that says, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate an additional 110,000, $101 for contract law enforcement services with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office to increase dedicated patrol as recommended by the town council? And then just for a footnote, it shows the town currently has dedicated law enforcement patrol Wednesday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM. This proposal would add dedicated patrol Sunday through Wednesday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, beginning January 1st, 2026.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead. You started it.
Would, would, we be able to amend the totals in Article 3 to reflect this, this amount not being in it? So, that it doesn't, sometimes people think we're voting on something in addition to that total when we have these separate questions. So, I...
Yeah, that's what I mentioned when I first introduced this.
Oh, sorry.
So, we would, hold on, let me, I just, I had the warrants.
It's easy to lose track when you're doing this in your head.
I had the draft warrants up here. Just a second. So, the, so right now, the money that's set aside for the, so we have this budget summary document that has the total numbers. So, in the draft budget warrants that I included in the digital budget book, you can, you could go to them to look. It has the total and appropriates 13,739,272. That does not include the 10,500 for council stipends because that's a separate question. So, anything that's, that's separate, it's not included in those total budget figures. So, under public safety, which is fire and law enforcement, it's 2,591,484 minus the tweaks that I told you I made in the budget. I would subtract the 110 that's in the question out of that number. And then that question would be separate. So, if that question was reject, was rejected, so say the residents voted no, when we set the tax commitment in the final budget, it would be 110,000 less. So, that would be, I don't have my tax rate calculator open at the moment, but it would probably be another 8 cent reduction in the tax rate. We'd be closer to another 20 cent mill rate reduction. The other thing that, that can do is if you decide to cut law enforcement earlier or whatever, we could make adjustments to the use of fund balance to offset the tax increase, but not before it's voted. before it's voted on by everybody. So if, if the, at the end of the day, if the goal is to lower the tax rate.
Yeah.
We can easily do that without making cuts by simply using funds available in the fund balance.
Right.
It's not the best budgetary maneuver on the planet, but it is a budgetary maneuver that's possible, given the size of the fund balance that the town has. We can adjust the step-down schedule, and we can do that, and we can do that. In the, in the budget proposal that I saw that the school committee is going to see tomorrow, they're using $1 million of their fund balance. They also have a, a fund balance. And that's one thing our fiscal policy asks us to have a fund balance of the total tax commitment, when really, we don't even need to have a fund balance of the total tax commitment, because they should have their own separate fund balance with a separate fund balance policy that manages their budget because they're a separate entity. So the town could consider amending its fiscal policy to only have a tax commitment set aside of the municipal budget and maybe the county budget and the other, the other aspects of the municipal formula. So then we would have to have even less set aside, and we would have more funds available to, for capital or to offset tax rates. So if that's the goal, is to lower taxes, that's the easiest and most painless way to do it. If we want to make difficult cuts, if we want to adjust people's wages, if we want to do all those things, then we can do that. Those are just difficult to maneuver. I've been in municipal government for two decades, and I've never seen people propose to cut a municipal budget that lowers the property tax rate. And so, this is a feat that when I talk to my other manager colleagues in the profession, they are jealous. They say, you're making us look bad, because they're, you know, in Wyndham, they're proposing a tax increase that's, you know, six, seven percent.
I can go there.
I just, just because they're our neighbor. But the manager tells me, he's looking at a tax increase of seven, eight percent, you know, or six, seven, eight percent, in that range. And other managers are looking at, at huge increases. And we've been fortunate of the mistakes of the past that have put us in a situation where we can make these adjustments in these years. Going forward, we're not always going to be that fortunate.
Right, yeah.
And I, I have also watched in my 20 years of experience, municipal budgets suffer at the expense of school budgets. And schools are critically important. I said that in my budget message when I introduced the budget, that, that I thought it was important that we responsibly fund these things. I only have control over a proposed municipal budget that you guys can accept or reject, and ultimately, the voters can accept or reject. Ultimately, I think the municipal budget will be well-received by the community.
I do too.
Last year, it was overwhelmingly approved by the voters. We articulated the messaging about that we were reducing the tax rate. We were strategizing on reducing our debt. All the good soundbites that people in the community like to hear. We're going to relay a very similar message that, that shows those positive outcomes. And people have the ability to vote on our budget, and they have the ability to vote on the school budget. And last year, the school budget failed here in Gray.
Yep.
And it passed a new Gloucester, which ultimately passed. So it's up to the voters to decide if they want to support tax increases. We're proposing to reduce the municipal portion of the tax rate, which is the only thing we have control over. Like I said, schools are incredibly important. When, if we, if we talk to businesses that were potentially coming here, or people that are considering investing in Gray, if we said we were butchering a school budget, that would not be well-received in, in those types of arenas. And so, that's not something that I think anyone is suggesting by any means. And I never suggested that when I shared the school budget information.
Yeah.
I simply believe that this is, this is a, a good budget that I hopefully you guys could support, and I'm hoping the community can support. If we have to have the question about the law enforcement thing, I got it all ready for you guys, because that's your decision. It's not my preference or my decision. I, I proposed that draft language, so we could ask that question if you want to.
So I'm going to interrupt us here. I think we've been round enough on this. You've proposed to-
Revisit putting it on the warrants?
So-
Yeah.
The question that we have to straw poll now is, will we break this out as a separate question?
Right.
I'd say yes, if you're asking.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think it's in-
Looking, yeah, show of hands for those who do.
Oh, sorry.
All right. I thought I was going out with a win, but evidently I'm not.
We will add that to the draft warrants.
I think this is a win.
Yeah, I, I just, yeah, I think it's an important enough question that maybe we, we should get some input on it. I, I don't know. I'm, I like, I'm sort of like you on the fence, so.
Yeah, well, and that's why we've gone back and forth on it. And I suspect the community, probably, we're reflective of the community as a whole. We'll just have to see who turns out on June 10th to, to vote.
But I would like to see, too, like you were saying, if, if that doesn't pass the reduction in the undesignated fund balance. So I imagine you're just going to phrase that up to $750,000 question at that point for the run-up.
Okay, yeah, we could change that language. But that would, that would also, if, if that, I could, what I can do, show next time is what it would, what the tax rate would be if that's, if that amount came off the total budget.
Yep.
And I think it would be close to double what we, what we have a reduction now, if not a little bit more, closer to-
I mean, I think that, I think the urge to keep our taxes down focuses, makes that an easy one to say no to. I think you much, frankly, it's a done deal. We're not going to vote this again. But I think you had a better chance of getting the money if you left it part of the budget.
Probably, yeah.
Because, for that very reason. But we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
I'm not a good predictor of the future.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I think ultimately, there, you know, I'll, you know, the 600 and some people who voted for you is a lot, but there are a lot more voters that I think will actually vote on this. So I think it'd be, you know, it'd be good to let them in.
With the 748 blanks, you mean those ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, those two, they count too. I'm going to take a motion adjourn?
Yes.
It's almost.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any objection, do you need to ask consent?
Nothing.
I am retired.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Congratulations.
Yeah.